Good to go?
Yes.
Good to go?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the council meeting of Wyndham City Council this Tuesday, the 28th of September 2021. This council meeting is being undertaken in line with the COVID-19 Omnibus Emergency Measures Act 2020, which provides for council to meet and is deemed to be open to the public if the meeting is streamed live on the internet. In the spirit of reconciliation, before we begin this meeting, I acknowledge the peoples of the Coolan nation as the traditional owners of the land on which Wyndham is being built. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I'll now read out the opening prayer and welcome. We pray for guidance in the council's decision making to achieve the best outcome for the people of Wyndham. Welcome to all the councillors and staff in attendance at tonight's meeting. Mr. CEO, do we have any apologies or requests for leave this evening?
No, Madam Mayor, no requests.
Thank you very much for that. Councillors, do we have any conflicts of interest in tonight's agenda? Councillor Maynard?
6.5.3, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other conflicts?
And myself, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if I'm frozen on the screen here. 6.4.1.
6.4.1, thank you, councillors, thank you. Just a reminder to use your virtual hands up throughout the meeting as well, please. It makes it easier for me to see, so, thank you. Item four on the agenda is confirmation of minutes arising from the previous meeting. So, minutes of the council meeting held on the 10th of August and also the 24th of August 2021, as prepared and circulated, be confirmed. Councillors, do I have a mover for that item? Councillor Maynard, seconded by... Is that councillor Remesh? I'm sorry, Teams is playing up tonight.
Teams.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, councillors, I'm just having issues with my screen, so I'm just gonna hold for a second so I can work out what's going on. Okay. All right, councillors, we appear to be having some technical issues on the live feed. So, I just, for those watching at home, all councils are in attendance at this meeting tonight and the councillors will be using their virtual hands and I'll call out each councillor as we go, as we move. So, at the moment, we've got the minutes of the council meeting. Councillors, I've got a mover, I've got a second for the minutes. I now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour, so councillors, councillor Mathis, in regards to 6.3.1, are you for or against it? Sorry, item four, sorry, my apologies, for item four, are you for or against the minutes? You're on mute?
Sorry.
That's okay.
I felt we were putting our virtual hands up.
Well, we're going around the room for moving and seconding.
For.
Thank you. The minutes, councillor Maynard, for or against?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Zatkowski?
For the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Remesh?
For.
And I'm also for the motion, therefore the motion in regards to the minutes is carried. Item five is dedications and presentations, there are nil. Item 6.1 is petitions. Mr. CEO, I believe there are petitions this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councillors. On the 27th of August 2021, council received a petition signed by 35 people addressed to Wyndham City Council. Of those signatures, 30 fulfilled the criteria as outlined in the Wyndham Governance Rules, section 54 and 5, and sorry, and five did not meet the criteria. The petition states, "The roadway exit of, at Lineage Logistics at 60 to 68 William Angles Drive, Laverton North, is easily blocked by a vehicle, and in particular, rigid prime movers, semi-trailers and containers, and the angle of exit is dangerous when vehicles are parked near roadway exit. Therefore, the petition is hereby request that a no standing zone is implemented on either side of the roadway exit at Lineage Logistics at 60 to 68 William Angles Drive, Laverton North. The original petition has not been attached to this report due to privacy reasons. Wyndham City Council notes the petition and will prepare a report to respond at the next council meeting on 26th of October 2021." Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Item 6.2 is strategic reports. There are nil reports on tonight's agenda. Item 6.3, policy and advocacy. Councillors, item 6.3.1 is resilient Wyndham national and global campaigns. The report is on pages seven to 14. Recommendation is on page eight and there are nil attachments. Do I have a mover? Councillor Zatkowski, seconder. Councillor Barrera. Councillor Zatkowski is the mover of this motion, would you like to speak to it?
I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very excited to be moving this motion tonight. It's just one of the many new initiatives that will be delivered through the Climate Futures and Environment portfolio. Council staff must be commended for their enthusiasm in delivering tonight's report and respective recommendations. I am confident that with this level of dedication, Wyndham's contribution to the fight against climate change will not only be sector leading domestically, but internationally. In August of this year, the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released the most comprehensive climate change report ever. The report shows that there is a very narrow path to avoid a climate catastrophe. It can only be avoided through an immediate and deep sustained reduction in emissions. Wyndham is doing its part. A key focus on the recently adopted resilient Wyndham strategy is mitigating and adapting to climate change with commitments to ensure that council decision making aligns with the Paris Agreement to limit a global temperature increase to 1.5 degrees. Council operations are carbon neutral by 2023, excluding the RDF. By 2040, Wyndham's transition will transition to be a zero carbon community. The UK is hosting the 26th UN Climate Change Conference of the Parties in Glasgow in November. It is being described as the most significant climate negotiation since the 2015 Paris Agreement. As a sector leader, Wyndham has the opportunity to build, sorry, to help build momentum ahead of these climate negotiations and advocate for global emissions reductions through the Better Futures Declaration, Race to Zero and Race to Resilience. Joining these campaigns demonstrates Wyndham's leadership and commitment to a resilient future. I commend this resolution to the chamber. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Zatkowski. Councillor Barrera, would you like to speak on this item?
I would, thank you, Madam Mayor. As councillor Zatkowski said in November this year, nations from around the world will gather together in Glasgow and be asked to increase their efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And known as COP26, it is, this conference is poised to be one of the most significant events since the Paris Agreement. And it's taking place against the backdrop of an ongoing global pandemic. I think together, climate change and COVID-19 are probably the two greatest challenges in our lifetimes. They challenge our resilience, our notions of equality and connectedness. Despite the ambitious goals in some countries, greenhouse gas emissions have continued to rise, with the exception of 2020, but only, as we know, as the result of the pandemic. Some might ask, what has this got to do with Wyndham or local government? What benefit is there in signing a Better Futures Australia declaration or joining the city's Race to Zero or the Race to Resilience? Well, cities are the major contributors to climate change. And according to UN Habitat, cities consume 78% of the world's energy and produce more than 60% of greenhouse gas emissions, even though they account for less than 2% of the Earth's surface. 96.7% of Wyndham's residents live in urban areas. As we grow, our urbanisation increases, we lose more of our natural environment, plant and animal habitats are threatened, the urban heat map increases and our health and wellbeing suffer as a consequence. Whatever decisions are made at the conference in Glasgow, the real work needs to take place at the local level. Mitigating climate change will be hard work and it will take a long and a concerted effort by many, but we're facing a climate emergency and it's our time to act in our own neighbourhoods, to promote these campaigns and to commit to the ambitious changes needed if we're to be the resilient place we want to be to work, live and play in the future. Whoever leads in this area will reap the benefits and opportunities for alongside the improved health and wellbeing outcomes, there are also economic opportunities for our community with future jobs and economic growth and social benefits as we build a more equitable and a more connected community. Joining these campaigns will have some financial costs, but the cost of not joining them and not acting in the best interests of our local community and its future generations far outweighs the cost. We can all play a critical role locally to build a resilient and a sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a scientist myself, I'm supportive of the opportunity to join the national and global climate campaign to ensure our natural environment is preserved and protected and to demonstrate our leadership and commitment to a resilient future, as highlighted in the Wyndham 2040 Community Vision. Just now we mentioned about the summit in November. Unfortunately, Australia, until today, we have not even made a firm commitment on our greenhouse gas reduction and net zero emission by 2050. In May this year, together with councillor Zatkowski and other council offices, I have the honour to attend the Victorian Energy Collaboration VACO official project launch, where Wyndham is joining other 46 Victorian councils to form the largest ever emission reduction project by local government. So far, our approach in Wyndham in achieving reduction in emission has been through energy efficiency, energy saving lights in buildings and street lightings, such as lighting the West project and rooftop solar panels. However, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, IPPC, released in August this year, came as a stern warning to Australia to take immediate action on climate change. We need to act fast. There are a lot of, there are a lot that we can do as a council by bringing climate-friendly consideration into urban planning, in particular to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. We are and we should continue to encourage rooftop solar panel project, energy efficient and convenient modes of transport. It also represents opportunity for our businesses, especially now that we are going to recover from the threat of COVID. With the time constraint of three minutes, I cannot possibly cover every areas we could take the lead on, but I would like to highlight a few areas we can take the lead. In new developments, we have the opportunity to encourage energy efficiency, rooftop solar and uptake of batteries. In urban planning, we have the responsibilities to make our cities more convenient so that if someone does not want to take their car, they have more efficient and convenient options. In energy efficiency, we have our own buildings, but we also have the ability to promote energy efficient solutions for dwellings in our city. We can also promote and support industries and communities to adjust to the changes involved in the transition to a net zero greenhouse gas emission economy, including capturing new opportunities and addressing any impacts arising from the need to reduce greenhouse gas emission across the economy. To take the electric vehicle as an example, although they are expensive at the moment, but very quickly they will come down in price. We should be encouraging the uptake of electric cars, for example. We also want to make it easier for drivers to charge their electric cars at home, at work and on the road. Let's start from our city first. Councils all around Australia have been putting in electric charging stations and yet we are still behind. And this is just one small example. In short, this recommendation is a small steps forward to climate change mitigation and adaptation, whether it is in urban planning, rooftop solar, cleaner transportation, the planting of trees which capture carbon in energy efficiency of our own buildings or in advocating for no net carbon emission. They are real action we can be taking as a council. These are things we can and we should be doing. I urge my fellow councillors not only to support the officer's recommendation today, but to take real action towards a cleaner Wyndham equipped for the future. I strongly support the officer's recommendation, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Hill. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am supportive of this recommendation as well. I'm seeing these as part of the broader recognition of Wyndham City's already existing commitment to a safe and resilient future for our community. As has been outlined in the briefing document, the only financial impact is in terms of the officer's time, but will be minimal given the already existing reporting mechanisms and in the promotion of the campaign within the existing operational communication budget. The updated Local Governance Act 2020 included a number of overarching principles that must be taken into account by councils, which included giving priority to achieving the best outcomes for the municipal community, including future generations and promoting climate change mitigation and planning for climate change risks. I believe taking the steps outlined here in the recommendation will help us move forward in this endeavour. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I also intend to vote in favour of this resolution, but do want to make a couple of points as part of doing that. It's all warm and fuzzy to say that we certainly want to sign up to these targets, but the reality is, we have and own an asset that is one of the top 500 biggest polluters in this country. And the words excluding the RDF do not ultimately exclude our obligations when it comes to that particular asset. It's quite bizarre when you consider the context of the emissions of that asset relative to the emissions of council operations. I think the broader point too that I want to make is that you don't see tobacco companies out promoting donations to councils, as an example. I mean, this is probably a good context to be made here, where on one hand, we've got one of the biggest polluters in the nation in our backyard and then on the other, we're out talking about using ratepayer resources to promote action on climate change. Nevertheless, I'm a strong supporter on climate change. I do believe we have to do our fair share, both individually and in the context of government intervention, and certainly support the context in which this resolution is proposed. But I do have some concerns about the idea of resource dedication to yet another campaign. What about the people that want, say, a road train station or the people that want jobs in East Warraby? Are we going to put resources into those two very important advocacy campaigns? And is this campaign going to take greater precedence as a council, as our priorities, over campaigns that really do affect the everyday lives of the people that we are paid to represent here and we are ultimately responsible for representing? So, I certainly hope on a national level, I hope the Prime Minister does go to Glasgow. It looks like he may or may not. Ultimately, at the end of the day, my job is to deal with local government based issues. And on that point, doing everything that we can around the interventions with, you know, the biggest polluting asset that we do own, I write down to the great work that council officers are doing, whether it be on the macro challenges that we face. We'll talk about tree canopy this evening as an example of the areas that we can directly influence that do have a material difference. But it is important to put things in context such as these. And certainly whilst I agree with the intention and the merit of continuing advocating for zero emissions by 2050 or even earlier, let's not kid ourselves about the challenge ahead of us and the assets that we are and the obligations that we have to deliver. No simple piece of paper resolution solves this problem. There are certainly some greater challenges, some of which we have no influence over, but ultimately we'll do everything we can, as I'm sure, when it comes to action on climate change. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Remesh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the absence of federal leadership on climate change, it's fallen to the states and councils to implement changes necessary to limit temperature rises to under 1.5 degrees. I proudly support the council's intent to adopt the Better Futures Australia Declaration and join the Race to Zero and Race to Resilience campaigns. We have in our hands today the tools to enact the change that is required to keep our planet healthy and alleviate the untold damages from an increasingly turbulent and unpredictable warmer climate. In the vast majority of cases, it is also now economically desirable, as well as ecologically desirable, for us to change. We simply need the courage to change, to shift to a renewable energy sector, to a renewable transportation sector and encourage industry to follow suit. Today is the council standing up and announcing that we are doing our bit. Personally, I've done my part. The question now remaining is whether you have done yours. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Remesh. Councillor Marcus?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think the speakers have all spoke extremely well tonight. It is a great concern, having come from the country and having all my relations living in the country. When you live in the country, it's completely different to living in the city. The country people know how to do it. Many, many times, Mr. Lance Pritchard has asked for the council to look at putting white tiles on all of our rooftops instead of the hot black tiles which increase our heat bank. My other item that I wish to speak about, to which none of you probably know and understand, is that clothing. Clothing that we wear is the second worst polluter to our planet Earth. I will be going ahead with this competition, I probably will be going it alone, because we need to stop the waste of clothing going to the landfill. 1% of all clothing that goes to the charities, that's all they can use, the rest all goes into landfill. We have become a throwaway nation. The houses we build today, this old house that I live in, which was built in 1926, I don't have air conditioning. I don't have dishwashers. I don't have dryers. I don't have to because this house was built beautifully and the trouble is when you drive out to some of the newer suburbs and see them side by side with, once upon a time, we had to leave a metre between the fence line and the houses. We have done this, we now have a very large job ahead of us to come back to make sure that we do not kill this earth off altogether. So, I just hope that we can all work together. I applaud Peter McKinnon and his team and Robert has taken over from where I left off. And I just hope that we can work together, but I think I might put my hand up to go to Glasgow because all my relations live in Glasgow, so I'll get a free trip. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I'll be supporting this tonight and certainly it's intent, but look, you know, with businesses on their knees in this city, you know, I mean, joining a global climate change campaign, to me, is probably not the most important thing or the biggest priority that we've got going on here. I did note some of the signatories in the report, City of Adelaide, the United Worker Union, Moorland City Council and the Climate and Health Alliance. So, at this stage, I'm not sure if other people will be signing on to this, but understand the intent of doing something like this. But it's interesting because a couple of months ago, I was accused and some others of, you know, grandstanding and putting forward a recommendation that office was already working on and, yeah, here we are with what I would actually call something of the same thing. Could we live without signing up to the campaign? We could, our office is already working on many of these items. Yes, they are. And as one officer put it to me, we are well advanced in this space. I've heard some people say we could be a leader here or there, but we already are in some of these areas and the report does actually reflect that. So, and really just signing up to this at anything to our climate agenda and the work that we're doing overall, probably not. But I believe we have been a leader when it comes to climate change, in particular solar panels, and no doubt we'll continue to do that. So, I support this tonight, I support its intent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. As there are no other speakers and there have been no speakers again, so now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Zatkowski is the mover, would you, for or against the motion?
For the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Barrera?
For the motion, thank you.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Remesh?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Shaw? Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
And I'm also for, and therefore the motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. Item 6.4.1, I understand councillor Mufford has a conflict of interest, so we'll dial you out and we'll call you back in at when it's appropriate time. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, item 6.4.1, Planning Scheme Amendment C243, Public Acquisition Overlay, Tarnet and Sayers Road. Report's on pages 15 to 21. Recommendation is on page 16, and the attachments are printed in a separate document, pages 3 to 70.
Madam Mayor, I wish to put forward an alternate motion for this item, please.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Tammy, can you put up the alternate motion as a shared screen so everyone can see it, please? If you could just enlarge it a little bit so we can... Thank you. So councillor Marcus, that's your alternate motion on the screen at the moment. Councillors, do you have, is there a seconded for this motion?
Madam Mayor, yes, go for a seconded.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Councillor Marcus, as the mover of the motion, would you like to speak on it?
Yes, I would, but I've got five points on my notice of motion.
Yeah, it is there. And there is a fifth point on the...
You see, I can't see it. I can only see four. Oh, I'm sorry. It's gone down there. Okay. The motion reads that council, one, acknowledges all written submissions received following the exhibition of Amendment C243 at the planning panels Victoria. Panel hearing held on 11, 12, and 28th of February 2020 and extends its appreciation to all those who have made submissions. Two, abandons Amendment C243 in accordance with the Planning and Environment Act 1987. Three, in accordance with Section 28 of the Planning Environment Act, tells the minister in writing of its decision to abandon Planning Scheme Amendment 243. Item number four, notes the need for certainty for affected residents and therefore will not pursue the acquisition of land through a public acquisition overlay for the purposes of a service road on Sayers Road and Tarnet Road. In brackets, subject sites identified in relation to Amendment C243. Item five, requests the preparation of report to be tabled at a future council meeting with advice around options of the protection of low-density neighbourhood, character and amenity on Sayers Road and Tarnet Road following an extensive community consultation process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Tammy, can you please remove the shared screen so we can have all the councillors on the screen? Thank you, councillors. Councillor Marcus is the mover of the motion. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I would, and I'm going to be fairly brief because I'm very emotional tonight. This has gone on for 10 years and I have been one of the councillors. I mean, we do have a lot of new councillors, so they haven't had the opportunity to work with the councillors in the past. But because the councillors in the past didn't really help and support these people, I decided that it was my duty as an elected representative to represent these people. So Madam Mayor, whilst I agree with the officer's recommendation to abandon Planning Scheme Amendment C243, I believe we need to ensure that the affected residents have greater certainty, which is why I am putting forward this alternate motion. This has been a very complex issue, and I believe we need to work with the community to look at the best planning outcomes for this area. In the past, over the last 10 years, they've been promised that it would be fixed six years ago, eight years ago, nothing has happened. It has caused those residents mental health issues and many other disruptive issues to their lives. And that's why I feel so very, very emotional tonight to know what they've gone through. And as elective representative, I never, ever want to see any of our residents have to go through what these 97 households have done in the past. The Planning Scheme Amendment C243 was going to result in a significant cost burden to our council, whilst causing a great deal of angst to gain for our residents. This is not a good outcome, and so I am pleased to support it being abandoned. The figure of 73.2 million was put forward, but according to other experts, it was more like 100,000, 100 million, and that is something that this council really could not afford. So I call on, I'm not going to say anymore. I think I've said enough. I know all the residents are looking forward to this report tonight. I know they're all watching. So I now call on all councillors to support this alternate motion this evening as I believe it is extremely important for us to undertake an extensive community consultation. And I want to emphasise that because that's not what they've had in the past. So I want to make sure that we, the council, the councillors, will undertake extensive community consultation process to look at the planning issues in the area. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I think in no uncertain terms, this resolution will send a very clear and strong message that the service road is dead, buried, cremated, will not occur in the context of a planning scheme amendment, at least for the remaining period of this term. But I think any decision-maker would be frightened from ever engaging in this process ever again. And most certainly sends a very strong and important message to every landowner, every person who lives in any of these affected subject sites, that there will never, well, there certainly won't be, according to this resolution, any acquisition of property either. But we have to have an honest and ongoing conversation though about the type of housing development that we will see along Sayers and Tarnet Road. And that is why the preparation of a report, which solely focuses around housing density and certain protections that may or may not be put in place, does further enhance that livability component. Thinking about the fact that you're seeing, you know, in some instances, subject sites along Tarnet Road where 20, 30 multi-unit developments are going in, fundamentally changing the livability of the area. And in my point of view, it's certainly leading to a lesser quality outcome in terms of the type of housing we're seeing along these areas. We've got to have that honest conversation, and as councillor Marcus has said, doing that in a in a community consultative way, but ultimately coming back and having a view whether or not we proceed around any rezoning or indeed we simply don't. But that is an important conversation that must continue to happen. In part because of the consequence of not having a service road, as we're seeing significant urban development in this area, but also making sure that local infrastructure, including septic, as an example, is not overrun by this notion of allowing more and more housing along these two major roads. There's also an important conversation about why Sayers Road actually is our responsibility anyway, whether or not there is an ability to offload that to the state as part of further conversation down the line in terms of our overall remit of things to do. The final point I'd make is that in relation to a consideration around the future densification and amenity neighbourhood character of this area, it is worth noting that in the previous Planning Scheme Amendment that was abandoned, this was an option that was explored. In this particular Planning Scheme Amendment, we don't have the power to do this concurrently. And so that has left us, in my opinion, significantly disadvantaged in comparison to the previous term that did have that opportunity. And when I say previous, prior to 2012, 2016, to be able to do that. And we know that there's been multiple Planning Scheme Amendments. So I think from my point of view, you know, I certainly express some of the frustration that councillor Marcus has expressed. From my point of view, I think there is an aspect of saying sorry for this period. I certainly am as a decision-maker. I am very sorry that this has gone on for 10 years. But also to make it really clear that as a decision-maker, I want to make sure that we're putting in place the best possible protections for those that don't want to see overdevelopment balanced against perhaps a view following community consultation that the subject owners, landowners may not want that either. And that's something that we must continue to explore and do that through a process that is collaborative and doesn't frighten people. And I appreciate people are and were and still are, but hopefully from tonight, are no longer frightened about acquisitions, but that we can have a strong and constructive conversation about the type of housing in your local area and more broadly on those two major roads. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Lories, it's a bit hard to tell the time when you're on, when we're on a Teams meeting. So councillor Maynard, you've got your hand up, I believe.
I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Certainly, I'll be supporting the amendment, but just suffice to say that since 2012, when I was elected, this has come to us in a number of iterations. And first and foremost, the first public acquisition overlay was, the first proposal for a public acquisition overlay was just to lay the overlay. And I certainly and a number of councillors who were on at that time voted that down. I supported if there was going to be a public acquisition overlay put on property, that residents be reimbursed for the land and not leave them sitting like residents have been in other parts of the state forever and ever, not knowing what's going to happen with their land. So obviously, it's come back to us. The cost is prohibitive, and therefore I need to support the amendment to kill it off, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll also be supporting the recommendation tonight. C243 has been a really challenging and a complex issue for all councillors, and it's certainly dominated much of my thinking and soul-searching since being elected in late 2020, especially as a Chaffey Ward councillor. The residents group led by Mr Greg Hood, I think they fought hard and they've led a sustained campaign against this public acquisition overlay. They've communicated their objections clearly and in a unified manner, and I congratulate them for that. I thank council officers also for being readily available to discuss C243 and to provide information to assist with understanding around its complexities and around council strategic justification of C243. I also want to acknowledge the protracted nature of C243 over 10 long years and the impact that that has obviously had on many. C243 has really been a legacy issue of many amendments that have failed to be resolved over the years. I think abandoning C243 is the right decision. The enormous costs associated with it cannot be justified in the current climate, does not represent value for money, and the costs currently outweigh the benefits to my mind. Abandoning it also puts an end to a long history and a chronology of amendments to manage the issues associated with two important arterial roads and the consequences of ongoing growth and congestion across Wyndham. I hope tonight's decision allows for opportunities to engage more constructively in the future. And I also lament and feel very sorry for what the residents have had to go through. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Councillor Zakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to keep my words very, very short. I don't want to cover ground that's already been covered by other councillors. I do want to quite simply thank the residents that contacted myself and other councillors throughout the week to advocate for their position. It gives me a great deal of encouragement to know that there are residents out there still willing to put forward this level of advocacy for a public interest issue. I understand that there's also a private component to that, but nonetheless, it was a public interest issue. I think if we had more residents in our municipality who were willing to go to that amount of effort on a range of other subjects, it would certainly result in a much greater robust democracy for Wyndham. And so I must commend them on the efforts that they've made on this issue. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too will be very brief, so I'm going to duplicate what's already been said. I did hear the pain from people in our community as to how long this has lasted and the impact it has had on people's lives. As a council, we are looking to currently update the 2018 Wyndham Housing and Neighbourhood Character Strategy across the whole municipality to ensure that we have that effective planning deliberation and process across the whole areas. We also are looking at the road safety strategy and looking at any elements in relation to roads in relation to safety that we may need to address. So that's all I wanted to say on that issue, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. As there are no other councillors wishing to speak, councillors, I now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Marcus?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Gilligan? Sorry, councillor Gilligan?
For.
For. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For the motion.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For. I forgot to put my hand up.
Ramesh?
Oh.
And I'm also for the motion. The motion is therefore carried. Thank you, councillors. Item 6.4.2, we need to call councillor Mufford back, so we'll give, we'll call him back in, and then we'll go to 6.4.2. Thank you, councillors. I understand councillor Mufford is back. So item 6.4.2 is the panel report for Planning Scheme Amendment C252, the new gaming policy. The report is on pages 22 to 28. Recommendation is on page 23. The attachments are printed in a separate document, and it's found on page 71 to 122. Councillors, councillor Gilligan, I see you put your hand up, so I assume you're going to be moving this one. Do I have a seconded? Councillor Barrera? Thank you. Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, please. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. This is a really exciting resolution this evening, one that has taken some years to get to. But it is a good example of what happens when you work collectively for a period of time to build a strategic justification to move forward with the community. I want to thank the many stakeholders that have been part of proposing this report for ultimate adoption this evening. Alison Kenwood and her unit, and Aaron Charles as well, and staff associated, have done a brilliant job in hiring one of the best consultants we could have came across, Rob Milner, to devise the strongest possible planning scheme controls around trying to mitigate the risk of new Pokis venues in growth areas, such as Trugana and Tarnet as examples, and finding measures that continue to highlight that net benefit test and to make sure that the Pokis industry and those that seek to enter into that industry are ultimately required to meet the highest possible standards in terms of planning applications. Being no doubt that this was heavily fought at the Victorian planning panels. And you can see by the people that had ultimately presented to try and water down this proposed change to our planning scheme, have been heavily backed by the Pokis industry and would have cost a large sum of money to present a series of... and would have cost a large sum of money to present a series of experts to try and water down this reform. And yet, to the credit of the Victorian planning panels, the state-based final path, if you will, to get to the ultimate position of finally including this in our Wyndham planning scheme, they have resolved with some minor amendments to allow us to proceed with this, to put it in stone and to make sure that we are protecting our new areas from the vulnerable nature of, the insidious nature actually of pokies and the losses that inflicted on our community. Over $100 million is lost, you know, 280 grand a day. And if we can just do a small part in slowing that down and making sure that that does not continue to rise with population, then we have done the best we possibly can as a local government within our remit and that is exactly what this does. It in some respects may be seen as a blanket ban. It's not. But most certainly means that the highest possible standards will have to be met for an application to proceed. And we have seen success stories already around this approach, whether it be in Trugana with the 70 odd machines that were stopped there. We've saved millions by now from being lost by vulnerable parts of our community. It's a proud legacy of this council. It's a proud day and it's certainly something that I think will be a legacy item for this term of council. So I commend it and thank all those involved and support the resolution. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Councillor Barrera, as a second, did you want to speak on this item?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor. I'll also be supporting the motion tonight to adopt planning scheme amendment C252. As a result of this amendment, this, if it's passed tonight, council will be able to make decisions over appropriate locations and operations of EGMs as well as being able to introduce new application requirements for planning permits going forward. So all of this will support council to make decisions that will reduce harm from gambling across our community. And it'll discourage new gaming venues from growth areas until new communities are established. So it allows council believers to assess planning applications that minimise the prevalence of gambling harms and instead focus on the way it builds communities, focusing on community resilience and delivering social leisure and recreational activities that are alternatives to gambling. While gambling can be ordinary pastimes for some, it is associated with addiction and harmful outcomes for others. Substantial research now indicates that gambling addiction doubles the risk of a person missing a mortgage repayment, leads to higher levels of unemployment, higher levels of family violence and poorer long-term health outcomes. Harm from gambling and in particular electronic gaming machines is a serious but a preventable public health issue. Data released in 2021 August, just a couple of months ago, or indicate just last month, 61 million, over 61 million was lost to pokies in Wyndham for the 2020-2021 financial year. And while that was down from 75 million on the previous year, it was only down because of COVID-19 and because poker machine venues were shut because of COVID restrictions. There were many stories of those who managed to stop gambling during lockdown in 2020, reflecting how policy can influence behaviour. Wyndham's already home to 903 gaming machines across 13 venues. This motion sends a clear message that Wyndham opposes additional gaming machines in area where there is already financial vulnerability. October is Gambling Harm Awareness Week and Wyndham should celebrate its role in minimising gambling harm through its policy stance. I congratulate council officers on the important work that they've done and the favourable response through the panel report. Thank you.
If I was pushing the right buttons tonight. Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
Just briefly, I think it's important to recognise councillor Gilligan's work in this over the course of last term. This was his initiative that came forward and that has continued through into this term and making a change in the planning scheme, as we know, is not always an easy task. And this is what change is actually really all about, good change, positive change for our community. One that has been endorsed by the majority of councillors last term and certainly this term, which I think is terrific as well. But I don't think we could say that necessarily this might not have happened without councillor Gilligan and his advocacy in this space. So congratulations councillor, well done.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which just speak on this item? I will now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Gilligan?
Four.
Councillor Barrera?
For the motion.
Councillor Shaw?
Four.
Councillor Maynard?
Four.
Councillor Marcus?
Four.
Councillor Ramesh?
Four.
Councillor McIntyre?
Four.
Councillor Hill?
Four.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Muffood?
All.
And I'm also for the motion. The motion has been carried. Thank you. Item 6.4.3, enhancing planning scheme protections against multi-level development, unit development. The report is on pages 29 to 37. Recommendation is on page 29. There are no attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Gilligan, seconded by councillor Ramesh. Councillor Gilligan, would you like to speak on this item?
Thanks very much. I know that we've gone for about an hour, so I'll be very brief. Probably only to say that I think there are some important aspects in this report. Notably, the clear delineation between the role of the state and the role of local government when it comes to the barriers or boundaries, if you will, around the type of zoning and restrictions around the type of housing typology that can apply in each zone. There are some important undertakings that are part of this report, including things looking at neighbourhood residential zones, minimum sized blocks. And we only just had a conversation before around Tarnet Road and Sayers Road, an area that would be impacted in terms of making sure that those larger style blocks are not ultimately subdivided into smaller blocks like we see in other parts of the city as an example. So these are the types of things that will be ongoing in terms of looking at how we can further enhance and improve our planning scheme. And as was mentioned before, it is incredibly hard to ultimately change a planning scheme. And as we've now passed in relation to the gaming policy components, that took some years. But we'll keep chipping away at this. It is an important conversation. It's about the livability of the city and looking at it from different aspects as we work through the term in terms of working towards building a more livable city. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gilligan. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Marcus, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this has been an ongoing issue ever since I've been on council over the last 16 years. And I'm pleased to see that we're making a little inroads, but not enough. And I'm sad to see that the state government are still quite happy to build three stories in some areas. And I, when I look around our city and we talk about a livable city, with being still able to put 18 house blocks into a hectare of land is too much. And that means that nobody has a backyard anymore. There is still a lot of work to do on this Wyndham Housing and Neighbourhood Character Strategy. And I think we need to continue to work with the council and the state government to make sure that we want what we want in our city and not what they want us to put in our city. Because sadly, none of them live here and they don't have the same passion that the people that have lived here for years and years. And when you see the housing development going up, you know, it just is not, it does not make a livable city. To think that people now, we have to put in green parks and spaces for people so their kids can go out to play, that they've got no room, no room for tree canopies, all that type of thing. So as far as I'm concerned, I will vote for it. But there is still a lot of work to do and I certainly will continue to do that to make sure that everybody is very happy with where they live. And and I'm very sad to say that most of the, many of the older Wyndham residents are all leaving this area. I had people in this week that said they want to get out of Wyndham because of all the, what's happening. And also to think that 42,000 people have left Victoria and gone and 43,000 have gone into Queensland. So why are the Victorians leaving the state in such numbers? So perhaps it might be because of the way we're building our cities. I don't know. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Councillor Shaw?
Yeah, just a couple of things in the report. So I'll be supporting it. I think it's a very important piece of work and it's actually probably a little bit overdue to be honest. So I'm really pleased to see this coming forward and I'm looking forward to getting involved. I know we've had, it was a briefing. We've got some workshops coming up with councillors as well. So I think that's actually really important. But there was something in the report I thought it was worth highlighting that Plan Melbourne that we do, the state government has put in place around a whole range of, I suppose, pillars that they're looking at. One of them is around obviously our planning and housing. So Plan Melbourne targets 70% of net additional dwellings to be located within established Melbourne and 30% in growth areas. So we would be deemed a growth area. We are a growth area. So the latest available data, and I think it was from 2019, be interested to see what it was today, shows 54% of new dwellings were in established areas, supposed to be 70, compared to 46 in growth areas, supposed to be 30. This is a massive problem for our city and one that is not going away. Clearly, we're not meeting Plan Melbourne targets, neither is the state government in relation to this, certainly not in relation to Wyndham. And as it says in the report, this imbalance explains in part why growth areas like ours are under significant pressure and require ongoing and increased investment in roads, schools, public transport, et cetera. So this is an actual huge problem for our city and one that I hope that we do look at and investigate and put some recommendations forward to the state government around these issues because we're not even meeting their own targets. In fact, I think as a couple of weeks ago, or even today, certainly the meeting was a couple of weeks ago, we have something like 53 subdivisions under development in this city. That is massive. That is huge. And we need to start ensuring that we have all the right planning scheme, all the right strategies in place to ensure that we can make the right decisions around planning for our community to ensure that it is livable. Because I don't disagree with councillor Marcus that in some areas and in some aspects, some of this is becoming, certainly not the city that I grew up in and the one that from a livability perspective. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too will be supporting this this evening. It's critical that we have a housing and neighbourhood strategy that can be relied upon and enforced, one that both manages housing growth in alignment with our council and the state policy. We need that contemporary residential planning framework. And I had to note in light of the report here is disappointing that it took two years after the 2018 strategy was submitted on October 2018 for the Delp to respond. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. As there are no other councillors wishing to speak on this item, I will now motion to a vote. Councillor Gilligan?
Four.
Councillor Ramesh?
Four.
Councillor Marcus?
Four.
Councillor Shaw?
All.
Councillor McIntyre?
Four, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
All.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Muffood?
Four.
Councillor Maynard?
Four.
And I'm also for the motion. The motion is therefore carried. Thank you councillors. Oh, sorry councillor Barrera, my apologies. I skipped you. Sorry.
It's okay. I'm also for the motion.
Thank you councillor Barrera and therefore the motion is carried unanimously. Item 6.5.1, Wyndham City Financial Reports for the Year Ended 30th of June 2021. The report's on pages 38 to 46. Recommendation is on page 39. The attachments are printed in a separate document on pages 123 to 195. Councillor Maynard, you're moving. Thank you. Do I have a second, councillors? Need someone to second the report, councillors?
I second.
Thank you. Ramesh? Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I do. I would like to move this motion tonight, which relates to the financial statements, financial statements and related documents for the 2021 financial year. The statements have been prepared in accordance with accounting standards and all other statutory and regulatory requirements. They've been audited. Is there something funny?
Thanks councillor Maynard. Please continue.
They've been audited by our external auditor, HLB Manjod, and also provided to the Victorian Audit of the General's Office for their review. All matters raised have been addressed in the accounts before us tonight. The Audit and Risk Committee met on the 15th of September to review and discuss the statements with the external auditors and recommended that council authorise the certification of the statements. A few things I'd like to highlight, Madam Mayor, in relation to these results. Council has achieved an operating surplus of $231 million in the 2021 financial year. This is a strong result and includes amounts of councils received from developer contributions as well as one-off or non-reoccurring grants. The developer contributions are made in cash or in the form of assets that are transferred to council. They called them gifted, but I certainly don't see them as a gift. It is important to stress that these developer contributions come with future financial obligations on council to build infrastructure and provide for the ongoing maintenance of the assets. Madam Mayor, I don't know what's going on, but it seems to be something humorous, but you know, while people are speaking, I think it's quite disrespectful. The developed contributions are made either in cash or in the form of assets that are transferred to council. It is important to stress that the developed contributions come with future financial obligations on council to build infrastructure and provide for the ongoing maintenance of the assets. Excluding these developer contributions as well as other capital grants revenue, the adjusted underlying result shows an operating deficit of $45.5 million. This compares to a prior year underlying deficit of $11.5 million, Madam Mayor. The decline in 2021 was due to a number of factors, including the reduction in revenue from user fees due to COVID impacted service closures, recognition of a net loss of disposal of assets, including the write down of intangible software assets due to changes in accounting standards. Details of these key drivers in the underlying results are provided in the body of the council report. As I mentioned, COVID has had an impact on the financial outcomes council facilities such as the landfill, Aquapool, Stigl Stadium, the Civic Centre and community centres and libraries were either closed or operated at reduced capacity in line with government directives. I have to say, Madam Mayor, that certainly in operating these facilities in the current climate, staff and have done an outstanding job in continuing to ensure that the best best services are provided within the constraints provided to the residents. Council's overall net asset base has increased by $364.6 million in 2021, including $97 million increase in the cash flow of cash and turn deposit holdings. As per my earlier comments regarding developer contributions, it is important to note that a significant portion of council's cash funds are held for future community infrastructure and other capital works projects. Programme expenditure relating to planned capital works was in the order of $78.4 million in the 2021 year. And programme expenditure relating to planned capital works was represented about 73% of the programme, while this is lower than in recent years. It is still a strong result in a year which, when COVID significantly impacted on construction and other industries through shutdown and restrictions, Madam Mayor. Some highlights of the 2021 financial... Some highlights of the two thousand and twenty-one capital works programme included the completion of the new Bionella Community Centre in Tarnie, the construction of the new soccer pavilion at Gollan Park and the installation of a new synthetic pitch at Arndale Park. Meanwhile, right across this city, we completed Wyndham Park's two thousand and twenty-one programme, which saw upgrades of close to two hundred parks over the last four years, which I might add councillor Shaw instigated in a budget process. And so we have those two hundred parks and councillor Shaw as director involved in that. We don't allow investment in active transport through shared paths and new footpaths, and we continue to reconstruct and resurface local roads to keep people moving smoothly through their neighbourhoods. The report also includes a performance statement, and it'll be finished in about two minutes, Madam Mayor, which has been prepared in accordance with the local government's performance reporting framework. This is a key initiative from local government Victoria to improve the transparency and accountability of council performances. The results for Wyndham City Council can be accessed and compared to other councils via the council, sorry, via the Know Your Council website, which is www.knowyourcouncil.bic.gov.au. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Maynard. Councillor Ramesh, you seconded this, would you like to speak on it?
Madam Mayor, councillor Maynard has covered the report extensively, in great length and detail, but I'll just keep my comments very brief. The report shows the ongoing strength of the council to provide services expected by the community. It's been noted that our future financial situation needs careful consideration, but it is the strength of our current position that affords time, as time and options, to ensure we continue to maintain the quality that the community has come to expect from the council. I thank the council officers for their ongoing efforts and provide my support for the final endorsement of the report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ramesh. Councillor Gilligan?
Well, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. In the context of this report, I mean councillor Maynard pointed out, was giving a bit of a laugh, and I must say, I was thinking about the financial savings to the council if we cut officer time used to create speeches for councillors that keep repetitively repeating the same lines for every time. So I certainly did think that was funny, given the context of the item, and certainly hope council officers do commit to that cost-saving cut. I guess the other aspect, I think, that was important, that it was part of the written speech for councillor Maynard, was, or wasn't, it was sort of added on, I guess, was the point that was quite rightly made about contributing to an annual budget process, not committing to millions of dollars of projects outside of a budget process. I agree with councillor Maynard, that is good governance, that is the type of governance I would hope to see. Unfortunately, it hasn't been the case in this term. I hope we do get back to that as part of sound financial management, good governance, and I certainly agree with him on that point. So I thought I'd put that on the record. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I'll put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
I'm for.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
For.
Councillor Marcus? You're on mute, councillor Marcus?
Now, I'm against because I, there's a whole lot of issues that I want answered. I'm very concerned about the budget going forward, so I will be against this budget.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Shaw?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Barrera?
For the motion.
Councillor Mafoud?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
And I'm also for the motion, the motion is carried. Six point five point two, Wyndham Tree Canopy Cover, the report's on pages forty-seven to fifty-four, recommendation is on page forty-eight and the attachments are on page fifty-five to ninety-two. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Barrera, seconded by councillor Zakowski. Councillor Barrera, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I'm really excited about this motion tonight and the report that comes along with it and the recommendations in that report, which form the basis of tonight's motion. Because this motion provides key directions and proposed deliverables going forward in relation to Wyndham's tree canopy cover targets. The motion tonight demonstrates council's commitment to making Wyndham a greener and a more livable city. Wyndham's increased tree canopy targets have been brought forward by ten years, in line with the Resilient Wyndham Strategy. This includes targets of twenty-five percent across our streets and thirty-five percent across our parks by two thousand and thirty. Significant improvement on previous timelines. These revised tree canopy targets prioritise future planting areas on public land and they include managing trees and the corresponding risks. Updates to council's tree and urban forest policy will ensure that developers deliver the required trees in new areas and it will also ensure that Wyndham implements system improvements to better track and manage those trees. The recent refresh of Wyndham's two thousand and forty vision clearly highlighted that this is a key priority area for our residents. Wyndham has some challenges, though. Our growth has led to loss of natural habitats, our climate is changing, our suburbs are getting hotter. This puts the health and wellbeing of our residents at risk. Increased tree canopy will help to mitigate these effects. It'll mitigate the effects of urban heat, it'll help to support our threatened biodiversity, it'll create better neighbourhood character, and it will help to improve the health and wellbeing of our residents. Some key findings from a longitudinal Australian report published in late two thousand and nineteen by Astal Burton Fing found that the odds of diabetes, hypertension and cardiovascular diseases were all consistently lower in places that had higher tree canopy provision. These findings are really encouraging from the perspective of making a health case for urban greening and from the increased return on investment that tree canopy cover provides. Council's report as a result of notice of motion six oh two in April two thousand and twenty-one, in fact, made twenty-seven recommendations that have all been incorporated into the motion before us tonight. Importantly, this motion commits to consider the budget annually to meet the need for planning, planting, establishment and management of trees to meet the new targets, to minimise risk, maximise canopy and to meet the increased operational costs as a result of these interventions. This commitment to long-term investment of greening Wyndham goes a long way to delivering the best outcomes for our community, including its future generations, and to ensuring equitable access to green spaces. The targets are ambitious and they well exceed Plan Melbourne's targets to two thousand and fifty for the west of Melbourne when it comes to integrating greening in planning frameworks for the urban areas of Wyndham and western Melbourne. In fact, Plan Melbourne's target is only twenty percent compared to thirty percent for other regions of Melbourne. So I congratulate council officers on this work, I congratulate them for bringing the timelines forward. This will benefit the whole community and the work gone into this report has been exceptional and I look forward to all of my councillor colleagues endorsing this important motion tonight, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barrera. Councillor Zakowski, would you like to speak on this item?
I certainly would, thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to thank councillor Barrera for her original motion that has resulted in this report being brought to the chamber, and again, for moving the motion this evening. As climate futures and environment portfolio holder, I'm very pleased to speak and endorse the recommendations in the report. Our community has made it clear through the Wyndham two thousand and forty refresh, draft council plan and resilient Wyndham plan, we all want a greener, more livable city. Ensuring our streets, parks and waterways and reserve have a rich selection of tree canopy is a major part of achieving this ambition. It's great to see a report which paves the way so that the ambitious strategic targets we adopted in the resilient Wyndham plan will be realised. This council has set the tone for visionary environmental stewardship when we adopted that plan, bringing forward a number of our targets from carbon reduction to tree canopy cover. This report provides community the confidence they deserve that our strategic translation into real pragmatic actions. The allocation of funding for more planning, planting and longer-term maintenance of urban trees is a major step and I'm particularly pleased with the introduction of semi-mature trees in selected parks and gardens, putting the right tree in the right place is so crucial. Updating the tree and urban forest policy sharpens our approach and will make sure developers don't use get-out clauses to not plant trees in our new estates. By adopting the tree canopy cover report, we are also positioning ourselves well to advocate for and receive external funding from state and federal governments, grants such as the recent state government's Green Up Cooler West. I commend this report and look forward to seeing how tree canopy works progress in the years ahead. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Councillor Marcus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wyndham, well, Wyndham area has always been a very arid, bare city and all down to Little River towards Bacchus Marsh, it's been treeless. Over the, when I was on the Environment Committee, we thought we were planting enough trees, but it's very pleasing to see in the recommendation that we are going to do even more. We still have a lot of work to do because there's still a lot of trees being removed which should not be being removed. Council really need to look at that. We are losing heritage trees as well, so that's something that I will be putting forward, that we should not be losing beautiful heritage trees that the heritage policy has not included. I would also like to make sure that we make sure that we use different species of trees to beautify the city, not to use gum trees in the city which dry out all the land and make it more arid. Where we could be putting in crepe myrtles like they have in Footscray, we can be putting in jack o' randers, we can be, so that we can make the city look more beautiful. We've got to watch what trees we put in because some trees do cause asthma, like unfortunately we put the plane trees in the city and I was one of the ones that made sure that we put all those beautiful trees in the main street when we paid to do up the main street, but we've just got to be careful on the species that we use. We certainly need a very good mix of trees. What I would like to see is that we go and we work in partnership with our residents and ask them how they're going to enhance their gardens, their nature strips by adding more trees. I'm of the opinion that I like tube stock, I think they grow very quickly. I only ever use tube stock here at my block and I think I've probably got the most trees that any councillor would have. And when Jane Edmondson was out here, she said my backyard was two degrees cooler than anywhere else in Wyndham because of the tree cover that I've got. So it is most important that when we're doing the neighbourhood strategy, the housing strategy, that we leave room, that we can plant canopy trees in all the blocks, not just in the streets. We've got to make sure that they can be planted on a person's block. When the people come to my place, they cannot believe the number of huge trees. Not many of you have ever been to my place to see exactly the amount of trees that we, I have got on my block of land and I'm lucky I live next door to the Salvation Army who also have an enormous, so our part of Watten Street has so many trees, it's absolutely wonderful to see. So that's what I would like to see in all parts, but we must remember the Wyndham climate is not like the eastern suburbs, the eastern suburbs is two degrees cooler than the western suburbs because of the arid land that we've had here and we've got to watch with the clay content and all that we've got. But I congratulate the council officers, I think we can if we bring the people on board with us because I think they all like trees, but let's have a competition, let's get them to plant the little trees, let them, let's go, we've got beautiful nursery people that will give them all the help and support they need, but let's bring on the residents to work with the council, to make sure that they all put trees in their gardens, their front gardens and if they've got a backyard big enough to make sure that we can reach the target that this policy's got here tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No worries, thanks, Heather. Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm supportive as well of these recommendations. I wanted to thank councillor Barrera for bringing this matter forward and to council officers in creating these reports. Trees are so important for our environment and not only our physical, but our mental health. I remember a project that I was involved with, the Point Cook Pop-up Park, there was a number of sessions run with younger members of our community to ask what did they love about most about where they lived and to draw some pictures, most of these pictures included trees. We do indeed need better ways to track what trees go where and what happens if they're destroyed or fail to thrive. I'm sure you, like me, may have seen some areas where trees are knocked over by cars, primarily in accidents and not replaced. Beautiful tree line stretches blighted by missing stretches of trees missing. Selecting the right trees as well, as councillor Marcus has said, for the right areas is so important. Extending the tree canopy, of course, comes at a cost and an additional cost which, if mature trees are planted, is one point seven million annually, which is why it's important as well to try and achieve external funding where possible. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McIntyre. Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Certainly want to echo the remarks by others in commending councillor Barrera on this notice of motion that's obviously transcended now into a proposed series of recommendations and of course, the update to the policy as well as thanking council officers, of course. I think some of the primary components that have not been canvassed, which sort of had been discussed but are pertinent over the course of this term, is how you actually do influence, as councillor Marcus was pointing out, private enterprise or private land owners as an example, to actually plant trees in addition to the government interventions that we've been talking about. And the portfolio holder made the point around ensuring that developers are held to account, I certainly agree with him, but there are other opportunities to do that as well. The city of Monash has built into their planning scheme the requirement that where you subdivide, you are required to plant a minimum amount of trees. Now, we don't have that in the established parts of our city and that is critical, as you're starting to see that, particularly in Werribee, making sure that tree canopy is not, as councillor Marcus has pointed out, resulting in removal of trees and not replacement of trees on a greater quantity. And I think in some respects, this report is damning of the Victorian Planning Authority as a state authority. I mean, you know, we don't even have land for a cemetery out in our city and this is another example of poor centralised urban planning, where the report quite clearly states that the road widths are not good enough, the tree canopy is not good enough from a practice notes and guidelines procedure. Again, it's all set by the state and if they do that and they had put these in place in the first place, we wouldn't have approved precinct structure plans, they're struggling to keep up with the tree canopy issues that we are talking about this evening. This will continue to be a challenge, given the vast majority of our city already has existing PSPs, it will be very hard to reverse this in those areas. And so incentivising, as has been mentioned in this report, will ultimately be critical. But a friend of mine who lives over in the eastern suburbs said to me, when he was over here pre-COVID, he noticed two things, the road widths and the lack of trees. And he said, that's pretty much the fundamental difference in livability to the people like the Carons of Brighton. And so I think that's really where we want to get to around that aspiration of people wanting to see that tree canopy and road width. And it's going to be a challenge for us in fighting the state to get those planning controls in place to do that beyond the investment that we're making. So well done, councillor Barrera, this is a great, another legacy item and I know that we'll make some grading roads over the course of the term on this matter, thanks.
Thanks, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So from 2021 to 2030, as indicated in the report, it is proposed on average about 17,250 trees to be planted every year. This is a great plan. On top of this, we also have about 3.2 million greening the pipeline project along for the region trail, Shetap, which is in my ward. All these will hopefully create a vibrant space for our community to meet, to play and to relax, to enhance active transport, and of course, with good water management. A Tree Canopy Cover Analysis Commission in 2019 found that there had been an increase of approximately 50% of tree, in tree canopy covers across urban areas in Windham across the 10-year period between 2007 to 2017. In 2018, about 5,000 trees was planted, and then 2019, 8,005, and 2020, in lockdown, a further 5,000. This year, we don't have the data yet. The new Tree Canopy Cover Report plans, plans for an average of 17,250 trees per year to be planted, which is about two to three times our usual planting capacity in the past few years, compared to the past few years. So the report also proposes to purchase, the mature trees costs us about 400,000 per tree, beside those little trees, which is expensive but is important and is exciting, and offices is to be recommended for the work in the past many years in greening our city. However, I just want to add a small thing, which is there was never a breakdown analysis of tree canopy cover changes based on individual ward in the past, say from 2007 until 2017, even until now. Even though we do have a map on the internet, I hope the implementation plan will include such an analysis. I'm definitely looking forward to see more trees to be planted in our local parks, in local streets, as well as along big roads, ulterior roads, to preserve existing trees from being removed due to roadwork, and to incorporate new tree plantings into the scope of project. When there is an opportunity, we should aim to advocate to the state government as well to use all the centre medium streets and shoulders of our major roads or freeways to increase the tree canopy coverage if possible. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Hill. As are no other councillors which should speak on this item, I will now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Barrera?
For the motion.
Councillor Zakowski?
I am for the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
I'm also for the motion, and the motion is therefore carried. Thank you, councillors. Item 6.5.3, I understand Councillor Maynard has a conflict of interest on this item, so we'll ask him to step out. Thank you. Councillor's item 6.5.3, Manor Lakes North Reserve Master Plan Adoption, the report's on pages 93 to 98, recommendation is on 93, attachments are on pages 99. Councillors will have a mover. Councillor Shaw, seconded by Councillor Ramesh. Thank you. Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
I do. I'll just be brief, I want to thank council officers for the work that they've done on this. This is an important master plan. I'd also like to note that this master plan is in line with a number of strategies, including the Windham Sports Strategy 2045, the Windham Open Space Strategy 2045, the Sports Facility Capital Development Guide 2020, and the Sports Facility User Guide 2020. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That was real quick, couldn't even get a drink in there. Thanks, Councillor Shaw. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting this recommendation.
Thank you. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I'll put the item to a vote. Councillor Shaw?
For.
If Councillor Marcus wants to speak.
My apologies. Councillor Marcus, did you want to speak? Sorry. Well, Councillor Marcus, sorry, I'll withdraw, putting the motion to a vote, and we'll hear from Councillor Marcus. Councillor Marcus? You're on mute.
Sorry about that.
All right.
I think our council officers do a wonderful job when it comes to doing the master plans for our city, and I think our residents really appreciate it, but just one little downside is that we never put anything in there very much apart from walking for our senior people. I had somebody in here the other day that said, Heather, why do we never put anything in to help and support our older people? To give us sport. For all of our sport, we have to leave this city and go elsewhere. So in future, and I've said this many times to CAM, please let us look at something for the people over 60 years of age so that they can enjoy their sport. But apart from that, as I said earlier, I think we do a very good job on our plans for the families.
Thank you, Councillor. Thank you, Councillor Marcus. As there are now no further speakers, I will now again put the motion to a vote. Councillor Shaw?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Maynard is on a conflict, so Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Thank you. Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
I'm also for the motion, the motion is therefore carried. We'll call Councillor Maynard back in, please. Thank you. Item 6.5.4, Alfred Row Reserve Master Plan Adoption, the report is on pages 119 to 125, recommendation is on page 119, and the attachments are on pages 16 to 162. Councillors will have a mover. Councillor Maynard? Do I have a second, uh? Councillor Shaw? Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
I do, Madam Mayor, although briefly. I think I said pretty much everything that was relevant when we went out for public comment. Certainly, the work that council officers have done to accommodate the needs of the Werribee Cricket Club and Werribee Junior Cricket Club, and the work that Councillor Shaw and Marcus have put in in support of that, I think is testament to the work that council overall does for open space and provision of facilities to clubs. I'll leave it at that, Madam Mayor. Good report, I can't wait for it to be built. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Maynard. Councillor Shaw, would you like to speak on this item?
I will. I will be supporting this tonight. I agree, again, great work by our council officers and working with the number of stakeholders that are going to be tenants of this facility. Still a few years away yet in terms of it being complete, but I also just want to note again that this master plan is in line with the Windham Sports Strategy 2045, the Windham Open Space Strategy 2045, the Sports Facility Capital Development Guide 2020, and the Sports Facility User Guide 2020. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I'll now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. For.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
I'm also for the motion, the motion is carried. Item 6.5.5, Jamison Way Community Centre and Reserve Draft Master Plan, the report's on pages 163 to 167, recommendation is on page 163, the attachments are on page 168 to 174. Councillor McIntyre, you're moving that. Do I have a second, uh? Councillor Hill? Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item? You're on mute.
That would help, wouldn't it, if I wasn't on mute? Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last council meeting, I put forward an amendment to the officers' recommendation to request the CEO to prepare a revised Jamison Way Community Centre and Reserve Draft Master Plan to include a compact sports facility similar to the type of sports hall we have at our local school, one that can use the sports, community events, and activities like performing arts or dancing. This proposed draft master plan is before today. Jamison Way Community Centre was built in 2006, at a time when there was only a few thousand people living in Point Cook. Since then, Point Cook has been, for a number of times, one of the fastest growing suburbs in not only Windham, Victoria, but all of Australia. It is the suburb with the least amount of available community space to be used for the benefit of our community. Planning schemes have changed to make this less likely to occur again in the future, but it does make it even more critical that the land and the opportunities we have are used wisely. It is vitally important this community centre master plan upgrade meets the current needs of our population. Point Cook is a very diverse multicultural community with over 160 different ethnicities at the last 2016 census. Covid has and is continuing to teach us that we need to be agile and we need to relook at what facilities are and what could be available. The 20-minute neighbourhood means having key facilities that are nearby and are accessible are not only good for our strength as a community but our physical and mental health. Point Cook already has a significant demand for kinder places and is being forecast to increase even further, hence the need for an additional third kinder room and the outdoor kindergarten area which is required. There is also a need to reconfigure the maternal health rooms, the general admin area, the new flexible meeting spaces, improving the internal circulation flow, modifying the kitchen, and renewing the remaining elements of the building that need an update given the building's age. It is also important to note that we are creating new pedestrian paths, encouraging walking in an area that currently struggles from its non-pathing surveillance element, not of course, not forgetting of course, the necessary upgrade to the playground. The predicted cost of building and finishing the sports hall is 2.3 million. 2.16 million is the cost of the build, and the extra is increased design and project cost. That is for a school-sized sports hall that would incorporate an indoor basketball-sized court and sports, plus it would have a sprung floor for dancing. Our ask would have been for a footprint of 1,219 square metres. The option here put forward by officers is estimated to be slightly bigger at 1,623 square metres. Having dancing in this location could also help our broader community, but we'd also be in walkable distance from one of our larger retirement villages. We know that keeping our seniors healthy and active is so important. Point Cook is primarily a young suburb, but we do have a sizeable and growing and very important older population. It is pretty incredible that currently we only have four netball courts across the whole of the suburb. Netball is the number one participation sport for Australian girls. We talk about keeping and keeping women and girls especially involved in sport, but most clubs have to play elsewhere at Altona or Windham Eagle Stadium, necessitating a journey in a car, which because of our transport network is not always there. Often that means that many people, including our multicultural community, our youth and our older citizens, cannot access the facilities that our municipality has to offer. It is disappointing, though, that the number of tennis courts here are being reduced to give that space to the netball courts and to car parking. Strategies such as the sports strategy and open space strategies are frameworks that exist to help guide determinations. The sports strategy is up for being reviewed next year, and the open space strategy hasn't currently helped deliver the necessary open space for our community. Adding any cost of purchasing the additional 0.16 hectares, that's 0.16 hectares, to make up for the reduced open space when the current deficit for Point Cook is 40.5 hectares is theoretical at best, especially if there isn't any land currently available to purchase. Officers gave this timeline of when they could come back to council with the amended draft master plan at this council meeting, and given the timelines involved, the consultation would not start until the 25th of October. The estimated cost of the whole draft master plan is 11 million. The council has already received 1.5 million from the building blocks partnership agreement, and it is anticipated that the council may be able to attract 2 million in grant funding from the Growing Suburbs Fund. I would therefore ask my fellow councillors to vote to agree for this to go out to community consultation and hear what the wider community thinks. As I said, this is purely the consultation phase. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Councillor Hill?
I'd like to reserve my right to speak.
Thank you, Councillor Hill. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Barrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't be supporting this motion tonight. The recommendation by council officers tonight responds to a council resolution of the 24th of August, and I think it's important to say upfront that council officers did not support the addition of a sports hall into the master plan of the Jamison Way Community Centre and Reserve, and I don't support it either for a number of reasons. The short turnaround time of three weeks has not allowed for comprehensive engagement with stakeholders. The need for a master plan was first identified in the Windham Sports Strategy 2045, which flagged opportunities to consider the future of netball, tennis, and croquet at the site, and the original master plan did that. Given the identified demand for additional meeting spaces and kindergarten services, a holistic approach was taken that then included this infrastructure along with the sport recommendations. So the original master plan was in fact informed by key council strategic and policy documents that considered the need for future redevelopment to ensure the site was fit for purpose to meet need. What we now have before us has no detailed costings, nor contingencies, nor future operational costs. Councillors have not had the opportunity to be properly briefed on the implications and the impacts of the revised master plan. For example, how viable is a model that proposes a single court? There are in fact many unknowns. This proposed sports hall calls for a single court to play badminton and table tennis, but less than 10 minutes away is Badminton and Table Tennis Connect, well within the 20-minute neighbourhood. But perhaps my biggest criticism is its whimsical nature, a parochial whim that has sought to skip the queue of other worthy projects and has been capriciously prosecuted ever since, against best advice outside of council decision-making cycles and against the open space strategy and Windham Sports Strategy 2045. It comes in the wake of agreement between councillors just a few weeks ago about the priorities for the long-term financial plan. It comes in the wake of detailed considerations and discussions about financial prudence, yet it seeks to add on another 3.5 million best guesstimate before the ink has even dried on the long-term financial plan. 2.3 for the sports hall, 1.2 to compensate the open space. That's a minimum of 3.5. At the June council meeting, Councillor Shaw made a late attempt to have $150,000 allocated for master planning of Soldiers Reserve in the budget. Councillors that night said it was poor governance, and the majority of councillors voted against it, including me. I fail to see how this is any different. In fact, it is slightly different because at least the other one was put in appropriately on the night of the budget, and we could have voted for it. This comes after the fact. I don't endorse the current version, and therefore I cannot endorse it for the purpose of public exhibition. It sets a bad precedent on the way we make decisions in the best interests of the whole municipality, as we're asked to do under the Local Government Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Barrera. Councillor Marcus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with what Councillor Barrera has said. This was thrown at us just a few weeks ago. We don't have the true costs of building this extra hall. We did get some working operational costs sent through to us today, which has shocked me. I also agree that councillor Shaw tried to put up the master plan for Soldiers' Reserve and that was knocked back because they said she should have included it in the budget. The scouts have now come to me to ask me to help them build a garden. So why is it? Why do we want to put all this extra money into something that was not included in our budget? And the scouts have got to build their own garden through my support, which I'm out there now doing for them. I think that, again, this was brought to us and I'm not sure, I mean, you all know that I love dancing. I don't think the people from Windham Vale will drive all the way down to Point Cook to dance. So I can't see the advantages of putting this extra hall in there. I agree that we certainly need to upgrade Jamieson Way Community Centre because it was built in 2004. But I cannot see why we would agree to do this one, yet we would not agree to do the master plan for Werribee, which has the oldest buildings which need a lot of money spent on it. So I'm really disappointed that this has come up in this manner. The council officers have certainly done a wonderful job with the extensions and renovations for Jamieson Way, but I do not see why we should be spending all this money. We have absolutely no idea, as councillor Barrera says, about what the final product will cost the ratepayers of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marcus. Councillor Ramesh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting councillor McIntyre's motion and I commend her efforts in bringing this up in support of all Point Cook residents. I echo all of the comments made by councillor McIntyre. Point Cook is underserviced. It is also a community with a high proportion of ethnically diverse migrants who prefer indoor sports, such as badminton and table tennis. The amendments included in today's plan is a reflection of the feedback that has been received so far from the community and is a request to receive further feedback from stakeholders and impacted residents. As councillor McIntyre has stated, there's a key difference in this opportunity and that is scarcity of land in Point Cook. Today's revision of the Jamieson Way Community Centre presents to our Point Cook community the option of an improved local community centre, outdoor sports facilities and a rare opportunity for a small court indoor sports facility and an activity hall. I would ask for support from my fellow councillors to seek the community feedback on the utility and desirability of these facilities, which we can determine the optimal use of this council land. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ramesh. Councillor Gilligan?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. This is pure blatant pork barreling. There is no doubt about it. And there are important and serious questions to be answered about how we have got to this position and why, depending on the outcome of this project, people have made a conscious decision to vote for this project. For the record, I will vote in favour of community consultation because I want the community to give us feedback on this project. But I want them to know a couple of things. Councillor Barrera's made some points, but I do want to go further on a number of them. I've asked for advice on what the benefits of this project is. And expert advice from councillor officers is they can't tell me the benefits. I've asked about whether or not there is an underservicing in this area. And there most certainly is multiple examples of servicing when it comes to badminton and related types of sports within the vicinity of this location. Then there is the question about value for money and the financials that have been quoted by councillor McIntyre in favour of her project, because it is her project, it is the McIntyre Way project, not Jamieson Way. This project does not include any 20% contingency costs. And the argument, quite rightly put by councillor McIntyre, that you can't buy a section of land of the nature to offset this site will show that it will cost much more than the $3.5 to $4 million projected for this project. Now, this is also about equity and fairness and proportionality. And I don't doubt for a second that Point Cook has demand for infrastructure. So does Tarnit, so does Truganina, so does Werribee, and the list can go on. But it is about the principal positions that we are taking: evidence-based, value for money, decisions that are reflected in expert advice, not going against council policy and making sure that projects are funded in the best interests of the community. None of these get ticks. There is nobody that can say that they do. So there is an important question to be answered. Why would you vote for this? Is there a deal? Is there some other reason why individual decision-makers would look past all of these very critical indicators to say this project has merit? It's a very interesting question. We'll see what happens come November in terms of the decisions and the way that they are ultimately made. Now, finally, if I find that the Point Cook, sorry, that this project results in cuts of funding for the Doughty-Davis intersection or for the Werribee CBD or for Little River Roads, you bet your bottom dollar I will be out campaigning hard against this because there isn't any funding for this project. Cuts will need to be made, projects will be canned. And in some instances, if some of those projects are cut, then what will happen in terms of community road safety? If we're not upgrading vital intersections so someone can have a shed, a sports hall, nobody voted for in terms of expert opinion, but it's been done up in a deal to get this passed. Now, there is really important questions to be answered and I hope the community does send the feedback. The project should be funded on merit and not on the basis of who is putting them forward. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Zakowski?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to bring it to the public's attention that I don't recall councillor Gilligan squealing so loud when he was proposing that the Goddard, oh, not Goddard, sorry. Yes, sorry, the Goddard Street Reserve have its pavilion built to a higher standard than the provisions allowed for under the council policy. I think it's extraordinarily hypocritical of him, on one hand, to quite willingly and openly
I speak to the question?
exceed those provisions. I am speaking to those provisions because councillor Gillard has raised the matter, oh, councillor Gillard. Councillor Gilligan has raised the concerns around pork barreling. And he's made an accusation about Susan McIntyre, councillor McIntyre, pork barreling her electorate. And he's taking a high and mighty position, a very high and mighty position, that somehow he is not guilty of the same instance himself. This is outrageous. It's outrageous that he would take this position in the previous term of council as he pleased.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
And then cast discursions, then cast discursions on people who are trying to do the right thing by their communities. And Madam Mayor, I will not be interrupted by this.
It's a question of order, Madam Mayor. Yes, you can be interrupted, councillor Zakowski. Point of order, Governance Rule 38. Not speaking to the motion. This has got nothing to do with Goddard Street. This has got to do with Jamieson Way.
Thanks, councillor Shaw. Councillor Zakowski, I've already asked, I've already mentioned the fact that I don't believe you're speaking to the motion. I've given you liberty to explain how it does link to the motion. I still stand by my point that it doesn't, you're not speaking to the motion. So I ask that you either cease speaking as you.
No, I'll continue on and I'll deviate from that course of conversation. I will be supporting this motion. This master plan has been budgeted for. There's no additional money through the planning process that's been asked for outside of what has already been approved by past budgets. We're not asking for funding.
Madam Mayor, on a point of order, in relation to comments that may be misleading. All right, keep going. We'll let him keep trumpeting there.
Thank you, councillor Gilligan. Councillor Zakowski, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this master plan has already been budgeted for. The vote tonight makes no commitment to the actual construction of a final master plan. It's simply a draft master plan that's going out to public consultation. And there will be an opportunity at a future meeting and I understand this is going to be quite a long and protracted process of getting this to completion. But there is no current commitment to even build it. And it may well be through the public consultation that there is a decision reached that it's not warranted. But to deny the opportunity for the community to have a say on this proposal, I think is unfair and is contrary to our obligations as democratic decision-makers to act in the public interest. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Zakowski. Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am seconding councillor McIntyre's motion tonight. I have said what I wanted to say regarding indoor sports in the last council meeting. And tonight I'm just going to highlight a few things. Speaking about the turnaround time by councillor Barrera, the proposal of the addition of an indoor sports facility at Jamieson Way certainly did not come as a surprise. It started back in early March this year where we initiated an onsite visit to proposed location with a couple of councillors and officers. After that, we had numerous conversations with council officers since then. And they were trying to work on the community, well, we would all try to work on the community needs. And conversation among councillors also happening. I appreciate officers' hard work and cooperation in working with us over the past six months, not only to prepare this report, but also to contact schools for the opportunity for our residents to use, potentially to use school sports hall, which is very much appreciated. To also answer the question from councillor Barrera, yes, some part of Point Cook is 10 minutes away from Badminton Connect in Truganina, but other parts is much further away and the booking was full all the time. That's the main issue. This is in fact a huge attraction for businesses. As I have to admit, there were conversations among our residents, especially in Point Cook, about investing in indoor sports facilities themselves so that they can actually play badminton. There is such a need in this area. Second, I'm surprised to see the report shows a net loss of this sports facility. Earlier this year, Harrison Ward councillors had the honour to launch an indoor badminton facility in Truganina and the business went so well. It's so heavily booked. Plus, the cost of maintenance should be low due to less wear and tear, like outdoor facilities. Thus, it should require less repairs and replacements. I'm not yet entirely convinced that we will make a loss on these facilities. Otherwise, why would businesses keep popping up to run, to invest in this indoor sports facility? Third, to answer councillor Gilligan's answer, right, of what the benefit of having this indoor sports facility? As a Harrison Ward community representative, I would like to express how excited the community that I'm connected with about this indoor sports facility. And after the last council meeting. And council support for the diversity of sports, especially Point Cook is a very diverse community culturally and ethnically. And there is a need for that. There is, there are a lot of benefits of an indoor sports facility. We can play sports all season, in all weather conditions and any hours as long as it's open. To answer councillor Marcus, I don't think people in Windham Vale need to drive all the way to Point Cook to dance. Perhaps they need another indoor sports facility in that suburb itself if there is such a need. Last but not the least, this is just a community consultation. We are not committing into anything yet. We will hear what the community had to say. We will know whether there is a need for this. I encourage Point Cook community and residents to give feedback from October 25th to November 23rd, 2021. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Shaw?
Look, thanks, Madam Mayor. Look, sport and recreation is actually really well-funded in this city. Do we need more? Yes, we do. We always do. But we need these investments in the right places that follow our agreed and endorsed strategies and policies. This change in the master plan is really all about one councillor wanting to include a single court or compact sports venue into Point Cook, a facility that will only service the people of Point Cook. And let's be frank, I wonder how many of those will actually have and be able to have access to one court over the course of a seven-day period. The total cost of adding this is, and councillor Barrera has stated this, is actually approximately 3.5 million because of the extra land we do need to purchase to offset the decline in open space. And coming back to some points already raised, how come this was never raised or discussed during the budget discussions? Long-term financial plan, it is now being raised after the budget was passed and other people have made comment on that earlier. I won't go into that. I want to give you an example of Alfred Road. One tenant that moved into the Alfred Road development that's going to, an important tenant, has waited patiently and not all of their requests were included into the master plan because many of them did not meet our endorsed strategies and policies. I'll give you one example. One of them, one of the tenants wanted a pavilion building as a double-story structure, declined. I believe this is a terrible mismanagement of ratepayer funds and Irremu Ward ratepayers shouldn't have to pay for this. Maybe if this is finally adopted, a special charge scheme is put in place for Point Cook residents to pay for a facility only specifically designed for Point Cook. I'm supporting this to go out for consultation because I'm interested to hear what the people of Windham think, not just the people of Point Cook. No doubt we'll hear from the Point Cook Action Group and probably some people associated with the Pop-up Park. But I want to hear from Irremu Ward residents and sporting groups, the Werribee Chamber of Commerce, who'll be interested in the investment we are making to reactivate businesses and jobs. And we might not be able to. We'll need to understand where this funding is coming from. The Werribee Rates, the Werribee South Ratepayers Association. Because now we might not, now we might lose the resurfacing of Hoppers Lane South. And all the other community sporting groups who have either waited in line because they were asked to or had to forego what they wanted in their facilities because they were told it wasn't part of a policy or a strategy. I've heard tonight some comments around this is what the community wants, but I've never seen that feedback presented to us. So I'd be happy to see that at some point. But this is a draft master plan that does not align with policies and our strategies, nor is it endorsed by officers. The Manor Lakes North Reserve Master Plan and the Alfred Road Reserve Master Plan that we spoke about tonight and which I highlighted align to a number of strategies and policies. The Jamieson Way Centre and Reserve Master Plan is not consistent with the Windham Open Space Strategy 2045 or the Windham Sports Strategy 2045. And from what I've seen from council officers today answering the many questions some of us have had, I don't think it'll be consistent with the Sports Facility User Guide 2020 either. So as part of this consultation, I do ask those community sporting clubs to come and ask maybe some reimbursement on the things that you've been declined, for example, electronic scoreboards. The facility is not in the best interests of Windham or its ratepayers. This is purely self-serving. And I must admit, I don't understand why the councillors in other wards would support this, putting at risk important projects that are aligned to policies and strategies in their wards and the people they represent. I do look forward to seeing the feedback. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, any other councillors which should speak on this item? I will now put the motion to a vote. Councillor McIntyre. Oh, sorry, sorry, my apologies. Councillor McIntyre, you do have a right of reply. Apologies.
Why is there a right of reply?
Because some people have spoken against it, councillor Shaw.
Councillor Shaw, there's been.
I think we're all supporting it to go forward.
I think you need to note that councillor Barrera and councillor Marcus both said they were not going to support.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear them say that.
Thank you. Councillor McIntyre, as there has been speakers, you do have a right of reply. My apologies for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try and be brief because obviously so many points mentioned there. Regarding the short timeline, as councillor Hill quite rightly pointed out, we have been discussing this from March this year at many multiple meetings and multiple briefings. The fact that there was three weeks was the timeline given by council officers when I asked the question when it could come back to council. It was not a timeline that I had given. It was a timeline that council officers had came back to myself. And that is why, if it is successful, the consultation does not go out until the 25th of October and not in fact usually, it usually would happen for tomorrow. In relation to, I'm actually quite astonished, to be honest, that we are asking for this to go out to consultation. The budget is voted on separately. The budget and the whole process of what we're looking at and going forward, we're not voting now or even when it comes back for the consultation, utter doing it. We are involving it in the whole process of saying, what is the budget at that appropriate time? So for councillor Gilligan to come up with roads or anything that's going to be cut as a result, we are going to sit down together as a councillor group and say, what do we approve going forward? With regards to the Badminton Connect Centre, With regards to the Badminton Connect Centre, quite rightly, as councillor Hill pointed out, 10 minutes, it certainly isn't 10 minutes for most. Sorry, councillor Gilligan, it is not certainly 10 minutes for most people within Point Cook. With regard to the Soldiers' Reserve and saying what is the comparison, the comparison to me is that Soldiers' Reserve was proposed after the consultation had gone out at that end point. It was not before. Also, I would like to point out that councillor Marcus, in a very, almost just a few moments ago, has pointed out how she would like more things created for seniors than our community. How seniors are not accounted for, how we do not have the facilities for seniors. And then when this actual facility is talking about dancing near a retirement village, councillor Marcus feels that that's not appropriate and in some way feels that it is not required. I wanted to just clarify because I think when people talk about a single court, it's a single basketball court size. So it's actually four courts. It's not one court basket, netball or badminton, sorry, one netball but four badminton court sizes. So I think the word one court might be a bit of confusion there. In relation to, I was actually quite interested in relation to the conversation on rates. We had, and I think it was councillor Gilligan at the last meeting quite rightly pointed out that one in four people actually live in Point Cook. And actually, Point Cook does provide quite a high proportion of rates in relation to the council budget. So to actually have the discussion on the fact that actually having a facility that Point Cook might require is Point Cook being disproportionate and actually not being appropriate, I find quite astonishing. And I do completely agree, it is going out for consultation across the whole community, and I welcome all those comments from the wider community. And I would just like to say in the very last point, council officers, and I do have a high regard for their advice, however, it's actually quite appropriate that six years ago today, this council actually discussed the issue of the pirate ship at Point Cook. So the pirate ship that was burnt down at a site that would-
Point of order, Madam Mayor?
No. Councillor Shaw?
Point of order, Government's Rule 26.1, right of replies introducing newer material not covered in the debate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, unless you can, unless there's a reason for introducing it, councillor McIntyre, I would have to agree with councillor-
If I can try and explain, and then Madam Mayor, you can rule whether-
No, I don't think-
No, I can explain councillor Shaw, why I'm introducing it, is my understanding, and then councillor-
No one spoke about the pirate ship in Point Cook.
I am talking about the council officers' recommendations-
Madam Mayor? Government's Rule 26.1, the right of reply that introducing newer material not covered in the debate.
Councillor, thank you. councillor McIntyre, you're actually out of time, so I'll get you to wrap up without talking about the, any pirate ships or anything else.
No problem. I just wanted to ask councillors to vote and for it to go out to consultation so we can actually see what the community thinks. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor McIntyre. Councillors, I will now put the motion to a vote. councillor McIntyre?
For Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
Against.
Councillor Marcus?
Against.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
And I'm also for the motion. The motion is therefore carried. Thank you, councillors. Item 6.5.6, proposal to enter into leases with PowerCore Australia Limited. The report is on page 175 to 186, recommendation on page 175 to 176, and there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, seconded by councillor McIntyre. Thank you. Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I reserve the right, but this report's self-explanatory.
Thank you. councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Marcus?
Thank you. No, I will not be supporting this motion. On page 185, it says value to the community. Electricity is seen as an essential service as defined under the Essential Services Act, and the proposed leases are for facilitating essential infrastructure to council facilities as well as to local residents and businesses. Well, PowerCore is a multimillion dollar company, which is in 51 other countries, employs 310,000 people, and we pay exorbitant prices for our electricity. How the council can arrive at 10 cents per year for 30 years with a further term of an option of 20 years is beyond me. And I've had a lot of people, since this went up on the website on Friday, ring me and ask me why council would entertain such a low rate when everybody else is charged exorbitant prices for leases in this city. We are being rated out of existence. We are paying exorbitant thousands of dollars in money for electricity in this city. That the value of our communication towers are paying 20, 30, 40, 50,000 dollars a year, and they are very vital to this community. So why are we not giving the communication towers at least for 10 cents a year, but we're giving it to the PowerCore? So as far as I'm concerned, I'll have to go with the residents, and I can't understand why council would be giving leases to a multimillion dollar company at 10 cents per annum. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Maynard, as there has been a speaker against the motion, would you like to, would you like a right of reply?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Suffice to say that it's a peppercorn lease, and it's a common practice throughout the sector. I think the report is itself explanatory. I say no more.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Councillors, I'll now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
Against.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Excuse me, councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Hill?
For.
And I'm also for the motion. The motion is therefore carried. Item 6.5.7 is the next item. Item 6.5.7, internal arbitration decision. The report's on page 187 to 189. Recommendation is on page 187, and the attachments are on pages 190 to 196. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard? Do you have a second, sir? Councillor Zakowski. Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the motion with one amendment, if I may.
Sure.
And that amendment is, is that the response that is given to the resident unnamed be included as a document in the minutes of this council meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Zakowski, do you accept that amendment?
I do. I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So for the purposes of the minute takers, could you just repeat that amendment again, councillor Maynard?
I will, Madam Mayor, that the response provided to the resident by a council on behalf of myself be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you councillor Maynard. And councillor Zakowski, you've accepted that. Councillors, that is a substantive motion. Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Nothing further to say, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Zakowski, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councillors, any other councillors which should speak on this item? I will now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Marcus?
Against.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
I'm also for the motion. The motion is carried. Item 6.5.8, Wyndham Refuge Disposal Facility, Community Reference Group, 2021 to 2022, annual membership refresh. The report is on pages 197 to 200. Recommendation's on page 197. Attachments are on page 200 to 206. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, are you moving or you forgot to take your hand down?
No, I'm moving, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other, do I have a second, to councillors? Councillor Ramesh? Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
I do, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the recommendation as proposed by officers resulted after some lengthy consultation in the community and applicants were received. And subsequent to that, myself and councillor Marcus and a council officer and the facilitator of the Community Reference Group met and interviewed the shortlisted applicants. There was quite a deal of interest, and I must say, Madam Mayor, I'm quite happy with this election, and I most certainly welcome these two community members to the Community Reference Group and look forward to working with them in the future going forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, no, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to welcome the community members, and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Marcus?
Yes, I was on the panel with councillor Maynard, and the quality of the people that had applied was very good. But I think the two people that were chosen, as you can see in the recommendation, will certainly add value to the Wyndham Refuge Disposal Facility Community Reference Group. So I'm very happy with what was done on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Marcus. Any other councillors which should speak on this item?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, you cut out.
I asked if there were any other councillors that wish to speak, otherwise I'll put the motion to a vote.
My apologies, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
On that, on that point, I'll put the motion to a vote. councillor Maynard?
I'm for, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For the motion.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
And I'm also for the motion. The motion is carried. Item 7, notices and motion, there are nil. Item 8, item 8 is council seal. Item 8.1, post-election review of the council's instruments of delegation. The report is on pages 211. Recommendation on page 208. The attachments are printed in a separate document on pages 196 to 295. Councillor Zakowski, you've got your hand up. I think you have an amendment.
Yep. Thank you. I would like to put forward the motion with the following amendment.
Can I ask Tammy if she can please put up the amendment for everyone's attention, please? If she can-
If it's going to be put on the screen, I won't, I won't read it out.
Can you see it on the screen?
No, we can't, Tammy, sorry. I can't. Okay, so-
See it on mine?
No, it's okay. It's obviously my end, and that's fine. Just, um, keep, sorry, guys.
Councillor Adele, I'll have to leave the room. I've got a problem outside, so I'll have to, I've got to get the blinds down and I'll have to disappear out of this room. I'll come back probably in about a quarter of an hour.
No worries. Thank you councillor for that. Um, councillors, my screen's not showing up, but that's okay. I take it that it's on the screen. All councillors can see it.
It's on the screen.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor Zakowski, you've moved an amendment. Do you have a second to the amendment?
I'll put my hand up.
Okay.
Thank you. You're frozen, Madam Mayor.
Councillors, sorry, I've had to swap computers. The other one's just gone. Apologies for that. Councillors, okay. So we've got- Oh, you've got to love technology. Can't wait to get back in person, councillors. All right. So apologies for that, everyone. Now, we've got councillor Zakowski that's put up an amendment to the motion, who I'm being whispered that it's an alternative and not an amendment. So this is an alternative motion. councillor Maynard is- Okay, let's try this for a second. All right.
Must be cold in there, Madam Mayor. You keep freezing.
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Beautiful. Alternative motion, councillor Zakowski's put it up. Councillor Maynard has seconded. Councillor Zakowski, would you like to speak on this item?
Uh, yeah, only briefly, Madam Mayor. Look, for the sake of the community who may not have appreciation for what this motion is really about, I have a belief that the instruments of delegation that were presented to us just over a week ago do require a little bit more scrutiny. My motion allows for three that are required under legislation to be put up tonight and hopefully pass and voted on in order to meet our obligations under the Act. However, I believe that the one particular instrument, the instruments from council to council offices would benefit from some additional work being undertaken. There's no obligation for us to pass those tonight. And I do hope that if the opportunity is able to be put in place, that we have that conversation and that the item be brought back to the chamber in a subsequent meeting or the next meeting, or hopefully before the end of the year, the very latest. That's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Zakowski. Before I open up to anyone else who would like to discuss this, can I get Tammy to remove the alternative motion from the shared screen? Just to go back to a normal board so we can all see one another. Okay. Excellent. So councillors, councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
I ask only to say, Madam Mayor, that as been indicated by councillor Zakowski, that these don't impinge on our compliance. I'm happy to support some further discussion and have them come back as soon as possible.
Thank you councillor Maynard. councillor Gilligan?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying that I have full confidence in the chief executive officer and the instruments of delegation as they currently stand, and would support the proposal, not the current one, for those instruments of delegation to be endorsed. This is quite extraordinary, actually. It is concerning. It is serious, more serious than people may realise because tampering with instruments of delegation can have serious and dysfunctional outcomes depending on how they are tampered with. These are in very important legally binding instruments that are used to enable the chief executive officer to delegate authority on- every single matter you can think of in terms of council administration. Now, the councillor who has proposed this alternative has failed to even explain in the slightest what he is distrustful of, why there has to be changes to the current instrument as it stands, and what are the consequences of even tampering with this, even in the most minor of ways. Uh, I would be concerned so much to say, Madam Mayor, that if these instruments are tampered to the extent that I even have the slightest of concerns, then I will support a monitor to be brought in to Wyndham City Council. That is how serious instruments of delegation are. They are not, uh, documents that you should be playing with. Not least of all, if you're not qualified to make a sound judgement about the types of changes you may or may not wish to make. They should always be informed by evidence base. Uh, and in my opinion, uh, if we start to look at this in a way that seeks to restrict staff in their ability to operate, then we have absolutely left our role as elected representatives. We do not run the organisation, we set the strategic direction of where it needs to go. And we provide confidence to ratepayers and our community that we are always acting in their best interests. That is why this document must never be tampered with, uh, outside the bounds of what currently is in place now. With our very serious and robust reasons, none of which have been articulated, and I doubt they will be articulated in the right of reply this evening. But I will give that councillor that opportunity, uh, by saying that I pose it as it stands and I hope that he uses his three minutes to give me even the most remote reason to be satisfied that we need to go back and have a further examination of this document. He needs to articulate to the community why he does not have trust in staff being able to continue in their functions and roles as it stands now. Why he does not have trust in the Chief Executive Officer to be provided with those powers in order to delegate. Uh, this is very serious, this should not be voted on, and in my opinion, we should vote against this and proceed with the recommendation that has been provided by officer advice. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be supporting this alternative motion. The reason why is because I believe that it is important that if a particular councillor raises a concern that that concern has the ability to be addressed. I do not believe personally, when I looked at the instruments of delegation, that I had any particular issue with them, but that does not mean that I should say that somebody else has not got the time or the ability to be able to ask those questions. I don't think it's a matter of tampering with anything. It's a question of saying, we are being asked to, do we agree with them? If, if any councillor, and it doesn't matter who it was in this room, was to say that they would like more time to look at it, that does not mean there will necessarily be any changes. What it is a question of saying is, are we really saying that if anything becomes before any councillor in this room, that they do not feel that they had the opportunity to raise appropriate questions? That anyone has the authority to say, that's not okay, to raise those questions? So, I'm sorry, Councillor Gilligan, I'm shaking your head, but I don't agree that we can say that it's to be tampered with. If you want to raise a question, if anybody had those concerns, I think we should give them the opportunity to do so. And that is why I am supporting this alternative motion, not because in any way I distrust either the CEO or the council officers or anything of that matter, but that's why I will be supporting it this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McIntyre. Councillor Shaw.
Oh yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't disagree with Councillor McIntyre. I think if councillors do have questions, they should be listened to. I just don't know what they are. Don't know what those issues and concerns are. They have not been articulated, even though we have been quite specific in some of those questions today. So the question was specifically, uh, Councillor Zakowski said that he thought there were as many as twelve of the staff delegations that should not be included. When I asked what those twelve were, he said he couldn't, he wasn't going to articulate what they were. So, yeah, I don't mind people having questions, but it's important before we actually decide to have more time on an important, probably one of the most important documents we give staff at this, uh, uh, to ensure the efficiency of the organisation can make decisions on behalf of council and this organisation, can make decisions as part of their day-to-day job, that we're clear as a council group what those concerns are. And we're clear upfront before we come and vote on an amendment, when you say, I didn't have any problem with it, but I'm happy to defer it because I think if a councillor's got questions, then you know, we should defer it and then give him time to do it. Plenty of time to do it. We've had a briefing on this, um, and a strategic briefing, where questions about this were raised. Last week was not the first time these instruments of delegation were presented to us. And if any councillor had a question about that before, uh, uh, at the strategic briefing, before it coming, lots of questions could have been asked, issues raised, questions asked, yet we get to last week and even today, the amendment came through today about this, to defer this. No conversation as a councillor group, and when councillors asked questions on why this should be deferred, it wasn't clear. So yes, I've got no problem with councillors asking questions, because I've asked them and had no clarity on what it is at all in terms of what the concerns are. And in case people in the community don't know, there's eighty-five pages of delegations, instruments of delegations, eighty-five pages, which Councillor Zakowski wants council officers to go through one by one, because that's what he told me in an email, wants to go through them one by one and justify to him, or to us, I don't know, justify why they should be actually delegated to them. That's concerning. That's called control, and that is highly concerning in this organisation. We have operated under these delegations for twelve months. I haven't heard one councillor raise an issue about any concern about any particular instrument of delegation. I've never seen it on an email, I've never heard it in a briefing. And yet, Councillor Zakowski wants council officers to justify to him all these, all these eighty-five pages of delegations and all of these instruments of delegations, operational, um, should be justified. Well, I don't know about you, but I haven't got time to go around checking on menacing dogs. I haven't got time to check if the, with the cafe is, um, you know, ensuring that their, you know, kitchens are clean. I haven't got time to worry about issuing a parking fine. I don't know about anyone else around here. So if anyone wants to get in their car and pick up a stroke cat and take it down to our new, new pub, you go for it.
Thanks, Councillor.
That's what these delegations are, and we've gotta go through eighty-five pages of these now because Councillor Zakowski seems to think that council officers need to justify their position to him on why these instruments of delegations should actually be actually delegated to them. It's baffling. So we're gonna end up in the most inefficient organisation going around, so I don't support this. I, and I agree with Councillor Gilligan. I look forward to the right of reply, because I don't know, maybe Councillor, Councillor Zakowski does have time to be driving around making sure, you know, the parking fines are standing up straight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
Yes. Hi, am I here?
Yes, Councillor Hill, yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, my heart's pumping very fast. I swear, it's a debate. I will be supporting this alternative motion as well tonight. I don't have the issue with the office's, uh, original recommendation as well, but our, the, the situation is our councillor colleague is needing some extra time. I too, like Councillor Gilligan, I believe, um, and I believe the same with Councillor Zakowski, have full confidence in our CEO and also our staff and, um, officers, who has brought, well, our CEO and who has already brought positive changes to our organisation so far. Every coin has two sides. I certainly do not see this as a distrust, as described by, by Councillor Gilligan. I will vote this up purely to support my councillor colleague. And since I, I've got, since I've got elected until today, it's been almost a year now, the learning curve is very, very steep. And we have a rocky start. There were so many things to learn, um, hundreds of pages of reports to read. And when a councillor is seeking a support, su- support to understand the instrument of delegation, I would like to show my support, not only that I would like to show my support, I would also like to commend Councillor, Councillor Zakowski for his diligence and attention of details, where every single vote of us is a very serious vote and our responsibility to our community who has elected us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Hill. Uh, any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Zakowski, um, I'm sorry, Councillor Barrera, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Look, just very briefly, because people have covered most of it, I really just wanna say that these instruments of delegation are not out of the ordinary. They're pretty standard things, not only in councils, but across many kinds of businesses, depending on how they're structured. They entrust the CEO and the staff to do certain duties, um. There's nothing challenging in them. We did have a briefing, it was pointed out to us what the major changes were. Um, I just don't think it's a good precedent to get a late afternoon amendment. Um, I understand, um, Councillor Zakowski has questions, I think that's fair enough. But I think some of those questions could be answered in a different way, and I really don't see the need to hold up a motion like this, uh, for one person who, who has some extra questions. They're pretty standard things, uh, and I think we just entrust our CEO and the staff to get on with the job. I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Councillor Barrera. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Zakowski, as they've been speakers against, uh, the alternative motion, which, uh, is currently on the table, uh, and as the mover, you get a right of reply. Would you like to close the debate? You've got three minutes.
Yeah, sure, um, tough act to follow, Mia. Um, I have to say, I'm not sure I'm gonna um, be that hysterical, uh, over this, over this matter.
Don't, I don't need to be patronising, I'm not hysterical, Robert. Completely inappropriate comment to make to a female councillor to call me hysterical. I'm passionate, I'm passionate about what I do, Councillor Zakowski. Don't call me hysterical.
Thank you, Councillor Shaw. Councillor Zakowski, can you please continue?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanna reassure the public, I do have confidence in our, in our CEO. He's only just been elected, but al- already demonstrated himself, um, to be honest and trustworthy um, and, and capable of listening, um, and following through on the things that he's committed to do to each and every one of us. So this is not a matter of, of, uh, trust in the organisation. Um, with, with each of these delegations and having read through them in detail, some, some do have limitations placed on them. So we, we have powers that are afforded us through, um, a range of different acts. Um, each one of those powers are, are ours by default until such time as they are delegated. So the, the comments around these delegations being that of, uh, of solely a, um, uh, operational nature is, is completely and utterly incorrect. Um, we, we have the absolute right, even once delegated, um, to decide any of the matters covered by the delegations in a council meeting. Now, um, there, there have, there have been instances where, where council, um, councillors in, in this, not in a chamber, but on, on this meeting, or in this meeting, that have, um, sought to use those powers to call things into the chamber. Now, there, there may be instances where, um, because I, I know people say that they've read them, but I, I truly question as to whether or not they, they fully understand the ramifications of, of the powers that, that are being um, given to, to council officers. I, I have spoken to former councillors and it's not, to my best knowledge, that this has ever been done. The, the councillors have actually gone through a, a very thorough process of, of properly reviewing um, the delegations that have, have been given to council staff. So it may well be that, that going through this process, um, and at the end of it, we decide, um, that they are appropriate. But the process is as important as the outcome. Um, to just carte blanche, be handed a document and be asked to vote on it is, is outrageous. We, we have to, we have to actually go through the review process, we weren't included in that review process. Um, and I, I think that it was unreasonable for the organisation to conduct a review for powers that are ours, that we are delegating. That's all I'm asking, is that we, we be included in the conversation that actually, um, we should have been included in the first place. That's all I'm asking for. Um, we may end up being the same, we may end up in the same position in a month's time, the existing delegations, um, will not be impacted. The organisation continues on the way it currently is, because this, this is a replacement of those delegations and until such times are replaced them, they still exist.
Thanks, Councillor Zakowski. Councillors, I'll now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Zakowski?
I'm in favour.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
Against.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor, uh, sorry, Councillor Shaw?
Against.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
Against.
Councillor Marcus?
As, as I have been absent from the meeting, I will abstain because I have not heard the conversations.
Thank you, Councillor Marcus. Uh, Councillor McFudd?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
And I'm against the motion, so I just.
Uh, division, please.
Yeah, the motion's carried, um, and I've got a division, so, um, I will go down the list. Councillor Marcus, you're, you're abstaining.
Correct.
Thank you. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
Against.
Councillor Barrera?
Against.
Councillor Gilligan? Councillor McFudd?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
And I'm against. Um, and the motion is nevertheless carried. Thank you, councillors. Item eight point two, awarding of contracts in four, Madam Mayor, uh.
For, how many were against?
There were six councillors for and four councillors against, and Councillor Marcus abstained.
Okay, thanks.
No worries. Uh, item eight point two, awarding of contract in four thousand and, four thousand, four triple zero eight one for Bensonhurst and Brookdale Road Reserve Civil Landscape Construction. The report is on pages two hundred and twelve to two hundred and eighteen, recommendation is on page two hundred and twelve, there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Ramesh? Do I have a second? Councillor McIntyre. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, no, thank you, Madam Mayor. The due diligence has been done and the contract's been awarded, so, yep, that's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
Only briefly, Madam Mayor. I agree with, uh, Councillor Ramesh's comments and I'm sure these two separate communities will be very, um, pleased that these projects are now, are moving forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Gilligan?
Now, certainly I'm happy through the instruments of delegation that the manager of Climate Futures will be given the authority to approve these contracts as part of the proposed resolution. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Gilligan. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor Zakowski, are you there? You seem to have vanished off my screen. Okay, we'll assume Councillor Zakowski's out of the room at this point in time. So councillors, I'll now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam.
Councillor Hill? For, thank you. Councillor Zakowski's out of the room. Councillor McFudd?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Marcus? Councillor Zakowski, are you voting on this? Councillor Zakowski, are you voting on this item? You were out of the room when I requested a vote, but you are back, so you are entitled to a vote.
I do apologise, I had to step away from the computer for a minute. Yes, I'm for this motion, thank you Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Zakowski and I'm also for the motion, the motion is therefore carried, thank you. Item 8.3, awarding of contract in 400004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 0004 Stormwater harvesting system. The report's on pages 219 to 224, recommendation on 219, there are nil attachments. Councillors, councillor Hill, you're moving this motion? Thank you. Do I have a second, councillor McIntyre? Councillor Hill, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, no, thank you. Just in natural alignment with the climate change support, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McIntyre, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I'll put the motion to a vote. Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Marcus? Do you want to mute councillor Marcus?
For.
Thank you councillor Marcus. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion, thank you Madam Mayor.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
I'm also for the motion, the motion is carried. 8.4, awarding of contract in 4000167, Eagle Stadium Roof Rectification Construction. The report is on pages 225 to 230, the recommendation's on page 225, there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, you would pick off the gun on that one. Do I have a second to councillors? Councillor Mufford, councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I've got no doubt everyone is well aware that this has been a long and methodical process that we've had to go through. Officers have gone at great lengths to source and secure experts in the field, to provide a solution to fix something that should have been built correctly in the first place. We don't know, well, we can't ascertain as to who's at fault. However, I am certain through the process that we have secured a firm that will provide a solution to this problem. Because I have to say every time it rains, I cringe. And even when it doesn't rain, I still cringe because it leaks even when it doesn't rain. So I most certainly welcome this process, I welcome the fact that we now have what we see as a solution to fix this problem, but I certainly, absolutely see the process coming to an end once the construction is completed. And this council has incurred costs to rectify something that shouldn't have occurred in the first place and will be doing its utmost to ensure that those costs are recouped by council on behalf of residents. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Councillor Mufford, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, yeah, just briefly, Madam Mayor, just I want to support the awarding of this contract. To finally see this, you know, a solution to a problem that's existed, I think as soon as Eagle Stadium was built, there was probably the roof and it was leaking, there was a few patch ups. Of course, these patch ups didn't work, we couldn't rectify the exact problem of the nature. So finally, it still sounds a new roof has been built over the existing roof, at least finally once and for all. When it rains, why the, some of these courts wouldn't, these courts might be flooded, which is, you know, caused disruption to many games, many of this, you know, it's caused some great angst in the sporting community from the many users who use that centre. So it's good to finally see a solution. Well, it seems a bit silly to build a brand new roof over the top of the existing roof, but at least it's a solution now and glad to see this contract being awarded. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mufford. Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Councillor McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just wanted to be brief on this as well. I just hope that the full cost of any rectification can be claimed back from the appropriate parties and so our ratepayers are not out of pocket for this project. And obviously as well the impact of the disruption that it's had going forward. So I'm just hoping that our ratepayers do not have to end up paying the full cost of this rectification and that we can pursue legally to recover them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor McIntyre, any other councillors which should speak on this item? I now put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan? Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion, thank you.
Councillor Hill?
For.
And councillor Ramesh?
For.
I'm also for the motion, the motion is carried. Item 8.5, awarding of contract in 400169, supply and delivery of, I'm not even going to pronounce it, LLDPE Geo membrane from landfill cell for construction. The report's on pages 231 to 234, recommendation is on page 231, there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, seconded. Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, I think the report's self-explanatory, it's the process of capping an old cell and I welcome the contract being awarded.
Thank you. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other councillors which should speak on this item? I'll put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Hill? Councillor Hill? Councillor Hill?
Oh, for, sorry.
Councillor McIntyre?
For, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
I'm also for the motion, the motion is carried. Item 8.6, awarding of contract in 400174, supply and delivery of geo-synthetic clay liner for landfill cell for cap construction. The report's on page 235 to 238, recommendation on page 235, there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Maynard, seconded. Councillor Ramesh? Councillor Maynard, would you like to speak on this item?
I'd like to say, Madam Mayor, it relates to the previous item we discussed and it's part of the capping of itself. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ramesh?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other councillors which should speak on this item? Now, put the motion to a vote. Councillor Maynard?
For.
Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Mufford?
Yeah, for.
Councillor Zakowski?
For the motion, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm also for the motion, the motion is carried. Item 8.7, awarding of contract in 400189, mobile security patrol services. The report's on pages 239 to 243, recommendation on 239, there are nil attachments. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Ramesh, seconded. Councillor Hill. Councillor Ramesh, would you like to speak on this item?
Um, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hill, would you like to speak on this item?
No, thank you.
Any other councillors which should speak? I've put the motion to a vote. Councillor Ramesh?
For.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Zakowski?
Ah, for the motion, thank you.
Councillor Mufford?
For.
Councillor Gilligan?
For.
Councillor Barrera?
For.
Councillor McIntyre?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Marcus?
For.
Councillor Maynard?
For.
I'm for the motion, the motion is also carried. Item 9, questions with notice from the public gallery. Mr CEO, are there any public questions this evening?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Item 10 is urgent business, there is nil...
Madam Mayor, sorry, I would like to raise something as part of earlier debate. As urgent business, I don't think you addressed the issue that I raised in relation to councillor Zakowski calling me hysterical, completely inappropriate. Not, certainly, that is not something that I find respectful in, as part of any debate. You didn't address that properly. He might be smiling at it, but it actually, is actually a poor, it's a new low and it's not appropriate to speak, certainly to, as far as I'm concerned, an educated female councillor that way, councillor Zakowski. I think it says more about you than it does about me, but ultimately in the end councillor, Madam Mayor, you didn't address the fact that it was inappropriate to do that within the debate. And quite frankly, I'm calling it out because it's just not, it's actually not behaviour that I ever want to see back in this chamber, again, in terms of how disrespectful that is to me as a professional and as a councillor. So...
Do we have a motion here?
Ah, well, it doesn't matter now, I've made my point, but I do expect that it's either, it's just inappropriate. And quite frankly, Madam Mayor, you should be calling that out as the chair of this meeting. I did raise it and you are the chair and there are things that you need to actually pull into line. Completely inappropriate, a new low. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Shaw.
Oh, I think this is a good opportunity, you could just say sorry. I agree with councillor Shaw, it's not hard, just, you know, just, sorry.
Yeah, so sorry you didn't mean it, but it doesn't sound like a meeting one.
Sorry, I was a bit rude tonight, that's all.
Councillor Gilligan, thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor Zakowski, do you want to take this opportunity to apologise? I'll be honest with you councillor Shaw, I don't recall calling it out, but nevertheless, thank you for addressing it with me at this point in time. Thank you councillor Shaw. There was too much going on, as you can appreciate. Councillor Zakowski, councillor Zakowski, would you like to take this opportunity to apologise if...
No, actually, I'll stand by my statement. I actually think hysterical was an apt description. Wait, may I finish?
If councillor...
Councillor Shaw...
Actually, I don't think, I don't think it's in councillor Zakowski's best interest to continue at this point.
I think it is. I think councillor Shaw was so hysterical that everyone was laughing at her. That's how hysterical she was. If you actually reviewed the footage, everybody was laughing.
How disrespectful, Robert. Just show a bit of respect.
Councillor Shaw, thank you for bringing that to my attention. As I said to you, I apologise if I missed it and that's, I apologise in that regard. Councillor Zakowski, you have been given...
I think people were laughing because it was actually quite funny.
Yeah, hysterical.
Councillor, stop!
Councillor Shaw, if you would like to take this matter further, you do know...
I will be, I will be, thank you, Madam Mayor.
...that and that goes for any other councillor in this, in this chamber, or virtual chamber, should I say. If anyone does have a grievance, they know the proper process to follow. So again, councillor Shaw, I do extend my apologies to you in that regard for anything I may... As there is no other urgent business, I will now move on to confidential business. Councillors, do we have a mover to close the meeting to the public in order for councillors to consider confidential business? Councillor Maynard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You have gone back onto mute councillor Maynard?
Sorry, I clicked when I should have not, but anyway. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pursue into section 66.1 and section 2A of Local Government Act 2020, this being your council be closed to members of the public in order for councillors to discuss confidential matters.
Thank you councillor Maynard. Do I have a second for this item, for this motion? Councillor Hill, I saw your hand go up first. Thank you. Councillors, I'll now put the motion to a vote. All those in favour will do that virtually rather than going around the room to close the council meeting. Councillors Mufford and Marcus, thank you. I've got 11 councillors that are all in agreement that the meeting should be closed to councillors. Thank you to the public that have continued remaining with us. We will go into confidential councillors, so we'll close the meeting at this point.